Okay, first, I would like to take a moment to pause and remember Sue Wilczynski, who was a beloved bus driver of Richmond Community Schools. She passed away unexpectedly over the Memorial Day weekend. So if we could just take a moment to remember Sue and keep her husband and her children in our prayers. Thank you. Now this evening, we have with us to do our pledge of allegiance. We have the First Lego League Junior and First Lego League members. If they could all come on up front here. Mrs. Durst as well. Come on all the way around. Is that in everyone? That would be nice, thank you. My FLL friends, come on over. You too. Come on, everybody. One more. Ms. Keller. We have everybody now, Mrs. Durst? Okay. First, I'd like to recognize the advisor, Mrs. Durst, and we have parent coaches, Mrs. Rans and Mrs. Crampton. Thank you. And then with us tonight, guys, when I say your name, if you'll just raise your hands so everybody out in the audience and those on the TV camera know who you are, okay? I have Evie Barand, Mason Brickell, Kayden Crampton, Teresa Keller, Justin Pendry, Connor Rans, Nick Savoy, Mikey Condon, Mason Gabridge, Lily Keller, Connor Good, and Jacob Schoenberg. Did I get everyone? Did I miss any? What's your name? Katie Devote? Katie Devote as well. We did go over this beforehand. Jordan was... Oh, you certainly did. Jordan Lockwood? Jordan Lockwood and Brett Fraley, I missed too, down somewhere. Thank you, Mrs. Durst. You're right, I should've put my glasses on. Now, at this time, if we could all please stand. If you guys turn around, they're gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Whenever you're ready, everybody.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the religion of justice, law.
Great job, and we're gonna be hearing from them a little later. Next, I will do our mission statement. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Before I do roll call, I wanted to let everyone in the audience know that Ryan Edberg had to resign from the Board of Education. He and his family are relocating to Lansing, so his last meeting was last month. So we wish him well, and we thank him for his service to the board and our school district. So at this time, I'll do roll call. Tracy? Chris? Sarah? I am here. Dave is absent with notice. Kyle is absent with notice, so it's all about the women tonight. And I also would like to introduce, it is our last meeting for Haley Fortuna. Haley is graduating and leaving us, and we have just an outstanding, dynamic person who's going to take her place. We have Lexi Radzuski, so we welcome her to the board tonight. Haley is showing her the ropes, and she will take over on her own when school starts in September. So welcome. Very welcome. Okay, next, I am looking for a nomination for appointment of secretary to the Board of Education. That was the position that Ryan held before he left.
And now, Nate Tracy Bartow is secretary for the remaining period of the year.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. Next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That would be the consent agenda. Next. I know, it's making you nervous because it's all women at the table, but you're gonna be okay. Next, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
The claims and account, there were no questions regarding it. The personnel report, we have some retirements and resignations, and we will be honoring some of them, but I'd just like to announce a few of them. Ms. Christine Graham, after 27 years of service, is retiring. Trudy Rapier, excuse me, is resigning as a preschool teacher. John Rhodes, the lunch supervisor at Lee Elementary School, is resigning. Terry Tomenko, my administrative assistant, is resigning to take a position in another district. Patty Voez is retiring after 18 years of service in the district. And Yvonne Worth is retiring after 20 years of service in the district. We do have a couple new hires. I'd like to introduce Nick Mathis and Mr. John Van Gempel. I don't know if I pronounced that right.
Yeah, you got it, I'm proud of you.
They are co-advising our robotics team for the 18-19 school year. With Mrs. Mashan's retirement, that position needs to be vacant, and they stepped up. And finally, Mr. Jamie Thiel, the administrative assistant, who will replace Terry Tomenko when she takes her new position. So, in your pack or on your desk, I did leave a copy of the contract for Mr. Thiel, as well as a work calendar for any questions. I look forward to our new hires. It's gonna be sadly, I will be sadly missed, along with her, they will be sadly missed, the retirees and the resignation, because they've devoted a lot of years to the students of Richmond and to their districts, so I wish them only the best. We are gonna recognize Chris Nolan tonight, but she was on the previous board number, but she will be recognized tonight, but Chris Nolan was accepted by the board for her retirement. So we have actually four, four teacher retirements and one administrative retirement.
Okay, it's been moved and supported and discussion. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our true blue moment. This is a time that we do in our meetings where we recognize the great things that are happening in our district or in our community. And this evening, we have Robotics Heaven. We have the First Lego League Junior, which is FLL Junior, First Lego League, First Tech Challenge Team, and our First Robotics Team that are here this evening with Mrs. Durst, Mr. Gillespie, and Mrs. Mashan. So I don't know who wants to come up first, Mrs. Durst maybe?
I'm just gonna talk about it. Just gonna be really quick, I just want to kind of sum up our year. I had two FLL teams consisting of grades four and five. There were 12 members, six on each team, and we competed in the fall. And then I had four junior FLL teams, so 24 students, who competed this past spring. And I just want to quickly thank, I know I've thanked before, but could never thank people enough, for their generosity. So I'd like to thank sponsors that helped donate for this year. PTE, Ooflan, Propane, Advanced Stop Heating and Cooling, Tony City and Cooling, Kathy Terry Miller, Tracy Bartow, American Energy Services, Richmond PTO, RC Organic Farms, Jason Myers Memorial Foundation, and without the help of my two awesome, awesome parent helpers, Lisa Rans and Kristen Crampton, I could not have done all that without them. So, thank you very much.
My name's Tony Gillespie. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lee Elementary. And this will be my second year doing the First Tech Challenge. It's for fifth to eighth graders, and we build a little robot, and we have a competition that we're in. And I'd just like to introduce some of our members. Being the first day of official summer break, many of them are not available, but my FTC members who are here, if you would drive our robot in here and just show them what it can do. We were sent just a big, or we got just a big kit of parts, a big, a big blue kit, with absolutely nothing put together. And with just a few instructions online, these kids who are coming in right now built everything. I sort of poked and prodded a little bit along the way, but almost everything was completely done by them. Although I say, I have to say, Ms. Delio over here, 100% instrumental to our success. Our first competition, we didn't get very high up into place, but every single round, we had a working robot that scored points and competed, and we look forward to doing a lot better this year. This little guy goes around, picks up phone box, and puts them other places. And again, everything that it's doing, every wire, every button press, they, they made it do that. Absolutely nothing can't put together. Very impressive.
Mr. Gillespie, who are your students up there?
Would you come introduce yourselves?
Come on up. Tell us who you are, guys. Come on up to the microphone so everybody knows who you are.
I only know them by first names, I apologize.
I'm Mikey Delio, and I've been doing robotics for a long time at this point, too hard being to track.
I'm Alan Mel Brandon, and this was my first year doing robotics, and I really liked it.
I'm Megan Holland.
I guess you could say we're passing the baton.
I just gotta say, we're passing the baton.
So obviously, first of all, my name is Nick Mathis. I am the team captain for the High School Robotics Team, and I just wanted to say with Mrs. Mashan retiring, we gave her a plaque to our banquet, but just so we, we wanted to be able to give her the chance to recognize us, because obviously, without this year, without Mrs. Mashan, we wouldn't be able to function without the school presence there. So can I have another round of applause for... And then also, I'd like to thank Mr. Walmsley for taking the chance to hire myself and Mr. Van Gempel to take on this program. I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna take a little bit longer than the other programs did, because we did have such a stellar year, so I wanted to be able to take the chance and have all the people in the audience and on Return TV recognize that we were able to accomplish this year. So to give you a little bit of background about what we do, we get a different game every year in January, the first weekend in January, and then from there, we have six weeks to build, design, fabricate, and put together a robot that we think is going to excel best in that game. So with that being said, it's a different robot every year. We do get a kit of parts, but it's nowhere near as what the FTC people get and that kind of thing, so that's kind of like the step up from FTC is where, you know, you're having to put it, put it together yourself, cut the parts yourself, find the parts from suppliers and that kind of thing. So this is what we came up with. The game this year was called First Power Up. We had to take these milk crates that have a cover on them and put them on the two outside switches and the scale in the middle of the field, which were basically just tier tires in the middle of the field. And then from there, based on how long you had the tiered tire towards your side, you got points per second based on that, and we're able to match them there. So we actually had to choose to compete at two district events this year. And at the Waterford District, we were ranked number two out of 40 teams and got knocked out in the semifinals. And then at Marysville, we were the ranked, ranked number four out of 40 teams and got knocked out of the quarterfinals. And then based on how we did at those two competitions, we also won two judges awards at those two competitions that are over there on the hardware table, that if you get a chance to see, they're actually really cool awards. The judges award is given based on team aestheticness and a well-rounded team and not just one category. So from there, based on how we did, we were able to qualify for the Michigan State Championship in, at Saginaw Valley State University. Only 160 of the teams from Michigan out of the 560 make it to there, so just doing that for us was a huge accomplishment, and to be able to have the experience of the state championship for the new students, and it was just, it was an all-around great event that we were extremely grateful to be a part of. Yes, in an ice storm, we almost had to stay the night. So I know previously, I came to a board meeting, presented this to the board, but I wanted to present this also to everyone. So in case you didn't know, all of the levels that I presented tonight are all part of one program called First Robotics. So that's the Junior FLL, the FLL, the FTC, and the FRC. So with that being said, out of all the school districts that are part of First in Michigan, Richmond Community Schools is one of the 42 districts that have all of the programs throughout First. So we were honored with a certificate that says, certificate or certificate of recognition is hereby granted to Richmond Community Schools for participating in the full First progression of K through 12 programs during the 2017-18 Power Up season, and signed by Governor Rick Snyder. So, not a good stuff. So based on how we did at the state championship, we didn't think it until the qualification actually came up, but we, our team had actually qualified for the world championship that was taking place in Detroit at the end of April this year. So doing that was just another huge feat to have the new freshmen, because our team is mostly considered, or condensed the freshmen, as half of our team is graduating this year. So to have those new freshmen have the experience of the world championship and being down there all week and that kind of thing was awesome. And... So at the world championship, there's 500 teams, so only 82 of those 560 teams from Michigan make it to the championship. So again, doing that for us was absolutely awesome. So then from there, you're separated into divisions, and there's eight, or six divisions? So you have six divisions at Worlds, and then you're separated among that, and then within that, you each play your own, you each play your own playoffs. So we were actually fortunate enough to win our division and advance to the Einstein Finals for the world championship, and then from there, actually, we were able to take second in the world. So out of the 17,000 First Robotics teams in the, in the world, we actually took second out of all of those teams. The videos that I'm going to show you here are us just being announced, the video that I'm gonna be playing right now is us being announced at the Einstein Round Robin Tournament. So this is just gonna kind of show a little bit of the PR that we got. So all the teams that are being announced are part of our alliance, which was, that's what, all Michigan aligned, so all teams that are on the squad are from Michigan. And also, a quick note, there was 65,000 people there the whole weekend. So the next video that I'm going to show you is us being announced at Ford Field, where was, where the finals actually took place. So this is kind of a...
And that is your Carson Alliance. Now we move on to Daily. Please welcome the reigning world champions, Team 2767, representing Kalamazoo County.
So that just kind of shows a little bit about what we got to experience over the weekend, and I can tell you, in that moment, I was on the floor, I could not stop shaking. It was surreal to be able to have that opportunity to be in front of all those people, and just to have that experience of, you know, the, the top of the work that we put in, you know, the countless hours, the 250 hours that we logged in six weeks, to have it finally all pay off, and to be able to say that we took second in the world and represent our high school. I'm proud to say that it's not just wrestling and chili and softball putting our high school on the map, robotics has now officially put our high school on the map, so... So before we do, we're gonna do a little bit of demonstration, so if I could please have Mikey come up here and explain what the robot's gonna do and why it does what it's gonna do.
Right, so now they're gonna set it up and get it to run, then I'll start explaining. Okay, so while they're setting it up, in, part of the competition was, at the end of the competition, there was 30 seconds where your robot was able to climb seven feet, not exactly, because you didn't have to climb the whole seven feet into the air on single bar at the top of the scale. So our mechanism we use to climb is use two bars on the back of the robot, connect to, not connected, they would hook on to the bar on, on the scale, and we would pull ourselves up with the mechanism, the mechanism we use to lift and use. So there we just lifted up the cube and after ejecting it, like we're ejecting it to go to the competition, to of course lean higher the scale, the switch to our side.
So basically, like I said, we don't receive a kit to be able to do this, so this robot is completely built from our hard work and just putting the time in to actually, you know, have all the students engage. I mean, there's times when we're here till 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning trying to finish the robot. I know Mr. Walmsley can run, like, because the key's always on in our room. But it's just, outstanding to have this program at the school, and I'm glad the school continues to support it, because I can definitely say without this program that I wouldn't know where I'd be going to college and what I would be doing. So thank you for your time, and hopefully I'll be back here with another blue banner, hopefully a gold medal, so, thank you.
My young ones are very anxious to have the contract out, they're asking questions.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. We'll take a few minutes and come over. Excellent. We are going to continue on with our meeting, but before we do... Before we move on to our meeting, we just want to thank Mr. Gillespie, Mrs. Durst, and Mrs. Mashan for their work with our students in the district's robotics program, and thank you to the students, what a great job. Okay, next, we have the 2017-18 Lee Elementary School Title I Program accomplishments. Miss figure.
All right, thank you. If the rest of the team could also come up, and I will go ahead and introduce you. These are the wonderful Title I parent professionals, they get their hands dirty with the students every day. First, we have a new member this year, this is Marie Cass. We have Mandy Dennafool. We have Karen Kukuk, who is also a preschool teacher for the other half of her time at Lee. We have Steve Pedry. Lisa Van Scooter couldn't be here tonight, and we have Laura Wilson. I would just like to take a moment to just, to thank the entire team, but also, as I was speaking to Laura, I didn't realize this, but she's been here 21 years, so 21 years of service for Mrs. Wilson, and 15 years of service for Mr. Pedry, so quite incredible. So who and how we service students. So the typical day at Lee, as far as Title I is concerned, we go through an intervention time of 40 minutes per grade level. So this is when the team will come and poll students that are achieving below grade level, and they will work with them in individualized instruction. So we have fluid case loads, so if somebody, a teacher feels that a student needs to be in Title I, they will submit the paperwork. We look at a multi-criteria, so it's not just one piece of criteria, we look at teacher input, we look at data, step, NWA, DRA, and all of those good things. And then they enter into the program. The exciting part is when we get the exit list, when the student has now met proficiency, and they are now out of the Title I program and then performing at grade level. So it is fluid throughout the year. Some benefits of the small group instruction that the Title I team does, we have about one adult to six students at any given time, and they have the opportunity to learn at their instructional level. So we kind of call it the surgeon, so they get to see where the kids are at and meet them right there. This builds confidence, so they get to be amongst the content that they understand or that they need to be pushed a little bit into, opposed to it being a little bit over their head throughout the school day. And these instructional practices fill the gaps for students to achieve. And we have alternative seating, which the students love. Just as we individualize the instruction, we try to individualize the way that they learn. One thing that we know about students is that they need to move, and research tells us that this is how students learn. So these, if you walk into a Title I classroom at Lee, you will see one of these for each child, so they get to choose what seat they sit in. So we have the bobble seat, the important seat, and I don't have a name for that one. Are there any students who would like to come and sit and see how this feels? Just a couple more benefits of the alternative seating. The students' seat is very fun, but we know a little bit more than that. It allows them to quickly pair up and move around, and with the non-linguistics, you know, they learn best that way. It also empowers them. When they get to choose their own seating, they feel like they have a choice in their learning, which is extremely important. And then there's the balance in the coordination and the posture too. So there's the health benefits. And the rest of the team is gonna take it away.
One of the programs that we use here at Lee is called the ESPR program, and it's a curriculum-based tool that we use in the Title I program. It's all technology-based, aligned with the new NWVA student data. We pre-test for diagnostics for customized learning experiences. The children are able to use videos after they complete the program and use different applications. We also do post-test monitoring and comprehension. This allows us, we have three times where the students can go through a program, and if they haven't quite met the goal, that's when we either give them alternative forms of testing to be done, or other diagnostics as far as specified areas in either ELA or mathematics. And then as a ending, when they complete the program, they get to do a video that masters what they've learned, and then it's a recorded test that will let them, it goes into like their... into like their files, so that if we ever wanted to go back and see if they actually mastered it, we can. And it's proof, because they have to do everything online and in the system. And that's about it for ESPR, but I do have one more application to show you.
Hey, ESPRers, welcome to ESPR. If you're new to ESPR, let me show you around. If you're not there, let me give you a quick review. In ESPR, you watch videos, play cool apps, and record videos of yourself. It's a lot of fun. And in ESPR, when I have fun, I'm learning too. Sometimes I'm learning math, and sometimes I'm learning reading. Everyone's a little different, and ESPR knows that, so it gives different apps to different people depending on what they need. It was where I needed some help in school and gives me a bunch of fun apps to move with and help me on my quest. What's a quest? A quest is a set of challenges on a scene such that I finish a quest by unlocking the door at the end. When I finish my quest and go through the door, ESPR tells my teacher so they know I'm learning. These quests take hard work, so I stay focused and get as much work done as I can every day. Over the next few days, you learn how to work all the parts of ESPR. You move from left to right, you watch a video, and then you play again. And then you take a quiz about the video and the app, asking a teacher for help if something doesn't make sense, but I know you'll be great. I'll see you later.
Along with ESPR, we also use iXL, which is another technology-based learning system. Students are able to work in the classroom and take it home and work on it with their parents as well. It is individualized instruction to support skill mastery. It's a standard-based supplemental skill practice. Parents and students, like I said, are given the login, you can work on it during the summer, which we always promote. Students are awarded certificates for the amount of skills completed, so they're actually able to take something tangible home with them to show that they are accomplishing and they're meeting their goals. Students enjoy being able to explore all of the options that iXL has to offer. They can choose what areas they want to work on, and this gives them an individualized opportunity to master a particular skill set. iXL also works and it allows us to track students' progress and we can identify areas for academic improvement, so they can work at their own pace. And depending on what the teacher's working on, and we can reinforce that in our classroom as well.
I would like to highlight some of our great growth this year at Title I. Our kindergarten students, 87% met their projected growth based off NWA scores. Our first graders, 67% met their projected growth overall. Our second graders, we had 85% meet their goals based on NWA. We had a third grade, 79% of our students met their goals. And our fourth graders, we had 83% meet their NWA goals as well. ESPR and NWA correlate very well together. I like the kids are working on, and that growth is outstanding this year for our kids.
All right, and I'm gonna talk to you about overall goals being met. Being new to the Title program, I was really excited to see how great of success our students did. 172 students received services through the Title I program this year, and out of those, 146 students met or exceeded their NWEA goals in math. 132 students met or exceeded their goals in reading, which is 77%. And 94 out of 114 students met or exceeded their goals in language arts, which is second through fourth grade only. The pie chart shows you a representation of the total title students, population, K group four population, and the percentage of NWEA goals met in all three NWEA components, reading, math, and language. The blue shows 81% met or exceeded their goals, and the orange, the 19%, is showing the students that are still working towards them, meeting their goals. We also have an after-school program this year, which focuses mainly on our third and fourth grade students. Our main objective was to prepare them for both the NWEA and the MSTEP tests. Students were very successful in these tests and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
And just to end with student voice, Ava in fourth grade told us a little bit about how she felt about Title. She said, "I like math because I like going onto iXL and doing multiplication." Olivia in second grade, second grade, said, "I liked learning on the tablet." Jacob said, "I liked tests because they were challenging." That's always good news. Cody in third grade said, "I like ESPR for math because I can see how I'm doing." Kenora said, "I love..." Help me out, Mr. Pedry.
Dosari.
Dosari, and creating comics with Mr. Pedry. And Ben in fourth grade said, "I love going to Title because of my teacher." Stay positive. That was our March is Reading Month, this year's theme.
I'd just like to say, you know, we talked about the classroom teacher, but oftentimes the balance of a great program is the support staff. And I can really say in the four years that I've been here, probably years before I got here, we had probably the best title staff and their dedication to the students at the elementary school, so thank you again for all your work.
Mr. Reinhardt, who's already up there, ready, raring to go for the 2017-18 athletic program accomplishments. And Ms. Borwick is coming up as well. Excellent.
Oh, wait for it to pop up. If you recall, last year, Mr. Reinhardt was up here, and it was pretty impressive, some of our student athletes. Oftentimes, as Nick Mathis said, you know, we are known for our sports in the district, but we also have a lot of great scholastics going on. And so I thought it was impressive when Mr. Reinhardt presented last year and he talked about these scholar athletes that we have in our district and the accomplishments they have, not only on the field, but also in the classroom. Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Borwick.
Be a little slow here.
All right, let's try this again. Well, thank you very much, like Mr. Wongzys said, my name is Chris Reinhardt, the Dean of Students at Richmond High School, and I have Becky Borwick, the Dean of Students at Richmond High School with me today. I'd like to start and begin by a big thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to lead and conduct such great programs and coaches. I'd like to thank all of our coaches in the district for the countless hours of service that they put forth and put into their programs. I'd like to thank the teaching staff and the support staff for their support in the classroom and on the playing fields. You see many of them at games each night. I'd like to thank Deb Michon and Keith Bartels, the high school, middle school principal, for their support and dedication to our athletic programs. And I would also like to thank our secretaries, Joanne Ferrante, Amy St. John, Bridget Shuboy, and Susan Ricker, for their support in athletic events and all of their behind-the-scenes work that is not seen but very much appreciated. I'm gonna start with our academic accomplishments. Many of you see our athletes in the newspapers, you may even see them on TV, but you don't see what they're doing off the playing field. We have four members of our senior class that received individual all-state academic recognition. Cam Barrett, Jessica Weaver, Megan Reese, and CJ Wagner were all-state academically. Seven members of the class 2018 received MHSAA Scholar recognition, that is the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Sophia Kessler, Jessica Weaver, Carly Barschuk-Tarvich, Courtney Tesper, CJ Wagner, Michael Bullock, and Austin Dubach. Here's some extra continued academic accomplishments. We're still working in the spring, in the spring athletic awards, but over 200 of our student athletes from season to season have received Bluewater Area Conference Scholar Athlete Awards. Our varsity competitive cheer team was honorable mention academic all-state with a weighted GPA as a team of 3.426. And our varsity volleyball team also earned academic all-state with a weighted GPA of 3.624, and that is the average of our varsity cheer and volleyball teams. This is an interesting slide. It shows you the percentage of student athletes on each varsity squad that is receiving a 3.0 or greater. So this is an average of the entire varsity team. So if you're looking at this volleyball team, 100% of our varsity volleyball team had a 3.0, everybody on the volleyball team. 100% of our girls bowling team had a 3.0 or greater. 100% of our girls tennis team. So I thought this was an interesting slide just to show you that students, student athletes are not just working on the playing fields, on the courts, and on the mats, they're also working in the classroom. This is my favorite slide of the slideshow. This shows GPA comparisons of our student athletes and our non-athletes within the high school. It also shows participation by grade level and an overall participation amongst Richmond High School student athletes. So if you look at that, 50% of our female population at Richmond High School is participating in athletics, and 53% of our male population is participating. So if you look at the overall grade point averages from the athletes and the non-athletes, our athletes are about .5 higher than the rest of the population in Richmond High School. This slide shows student athletes that are not just participating in one sport, they're multi-sports, they're playing in multiple sports. 145 of our student athletes in high school are participating in more than one sport. There are 43 student athletes that are playing three sports, so that means they're playing in each of the three seasons that are offered through the MHSAA and through Richmond High School. Jessica Weaver and Austin Dubach, you can see their names are highlighted as seniors, they participated in three sports all four years at Richmond High School, so it shows their dedication to athletics. Some of our athletic accomplishments this year, and I could go on and on and on, but I'm gonna try to keep it, keep it quick. Six of our athletic teams were Bluewater Area Conference champions throughout the year. We received two MHSAA district championships, three MHSAA regional champions, two state runner-ups, and two of our teams qualified for the state tournament in football and boys bowling, both qualified for the state tournament. Our boys bowling team qualified at the state tournament to compete at the next level in the quarterfinal. Our wrestling team was the Macomb County Team of the Year in Divisions 2, 3, and 4, and this is very interesting. I tried to keep this amongst teams, but I thought these individual accomplishments were outstanding. Chase Churchill was the BWAC MVP in all three sports that he participated this season. That means he participated in three separate seasons, he was the MVP of that sport amongst our league in all three of the sports. And CJ Wagner was the Bowler of the Year in Macomb County. That's all divisions. Pretty outstanding accomplishments. 21, and I put over more because our spring season has not yet been completed, 21 student athletes have received all-state recognition amongst their classes and divisions in the sports they participated in. So I'm just gonna pick a few of them. If you look at the first name, Colt McKernan, he was not only all-state in one sport, he was all-state in two sports, in wrestling and football. We have a few state champions this year. Tyler Marino and Alex Roberts were both state champions in wrestling. Down at the end, Shannon Gaffney just finished at the state track meet, she finished fifth in the discus, which made her first team. But there's so, just to show you some of the names, and there will be some more that'll be coming out for the spring athletic season. 23 student athletes qualified and participated in the individual MHSAA state championships. 12 out of 14 spaces, 12 out of 14 wrestlers, you can only put 14 into the individual state competition for wrestling, and 12 of the 14 of our wrestlers made it to the individual state championships. We sent seven student athletes to the track and field state championships this year, three bowlers and one golfer. This is a picture from our annual signing day. 10, 10 of our 2018 seniors are going to be competing in the collegiate level athletically. This is a huge accomplishment. If you are keeping your eyes on the newspapers and looking at social media, some Class A schools who have four and five times as many students as we have at Richmond High School are sending two and three to play intercollegiate athletics, and we've sent 10. Last year, we also sent more than 10. Colt McKernan will be going to SIUE to wrestle. Elizabeth Masjerak will be cheering at Alma College. Austin Sinda will be playing baseball at Jackson Community College. Chase Churchill will be playing football at Wayne State University. Tyler Marino will be wrestling at University of Findlay. Shayla Zalovsky will be playing volleyball at Macomb Community College. Jessica Weaver will be playing volleyball at Illinois Tech. Carly Barschuk-Tarvich will be playing softball at Lehigh. Alyssa Keller, which we don't offer gymnastics, she's a senior, she is a gymnast, and she will be competing at Western Michigan University, and we included her in the signing day this year. Evelyn Swatek will also be playing softball at Oakland Community College. We had several Coaches of the Year this year that are nominated by their peers within their own sports. Brandon Day and Preston Trend were the Rest of the Coaches of the Year in the BWAC. Kelly Mathis in competitive cheer, Scott Evans in baseball, Steve Schuster in girls' soccer, and Josh Presnel was the Coach of the Year for the boys basketball, for boys basketball this season in the BWAC. This is an outstanding accomplishment. Howard Stewart is in his 40th year of coaching softball just at Richmond High School, and he reached his 1,000th win this year at Romeo High School, and that is an amazing accomplishment. At Richmond High School, we host a lot of tournaments and events. This is just a list of some of them. At these tournaments, we're bringing in schools from around the state of Michigan to compete in their different sports. We've also hosted a handful of MHSAA state tournaments at Richmond High School. We hosted the individual wrestling district and regional. We hosted the team wrestling regional this year. We just completed the baseball and softball district here at Richmond High School as well. And we have several other tournaments that we hope... And we have several other tournaments that we host throughout the year. At our cheerleading tournament in January, we had over 35 teams here competing in competitive cheer. So we're bringing schools from around the state to Richmond. The Middle School sponsored six athletic programs. They have 14 different teams. Student-athletes participated in over 100 different contests this year. A total of 190 of those student-athletes participated, 190 student-athletes participated in the 1718 school year, and more than 50% of those student-athletes earned a 3.0 or better in the classroom. This is some of the information. I'm gonna be putting a packet together like I did last year, and I will email it out. It'll also be in our district athletic website, which is rhsbuudebels.com if you're ever interested in seeing where our student-athletes are competing. We also have social media accounts on Twitter and on Instagram if you wanna see updates. And that is @rhsbuudebels1 for both of those social media platforms. Our softball team will be competing in the quarterfinal tomorrow at Nova High School against Divine Child at 4:00. So keep your eyes open and make sure you're checking those social media platforms to see where they land. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, next. It's our time to recognize some staff members that are retiring from Richmond Community Schools. And if you came in early tonight and saw some of these people walking around, they were the people with the biggest smiles on their faces in their room. We have four teachers and one administrator who are retiring. Chris Nolan, Patty Boz, and Chris Graham from the middle school, Yvonne Worth from the elementary, and Deb, oh, she touched us in the back there, Deb Michon from the high school, high school principal. Together, these ladies have given a total of 104 years to the students of Richmond Schools. Two of them, Mrs. Graham and Mrs. Nolan, spent their entire careers here at Richmond. So before we get on to the regular presentations, just on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you very much for your dedication and what you have given to our students each and every day. You have all given something to them, something special. They will remember you forever. We thank you so much. We have been proud to be able to call you our employees. Thank you.
I'm gonna begin with Miss Michon. So if you'll come on up, Miss Michon, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bartel, who's gonna say a few words about Miss Michon. And then he'll introduce the middle school staff, and then the, hello, Mr. Koach, you can walk through this is for the elementary. You want to do one at a time? You might as well stand up front.
Yeah, and then just have them stand.
Well, stand up there.
Yep.
I'm gonna give you just a little background, because there's a lot that I have learned about Deborah Michon over the last four years. She was hired at Richmond High School as an assistant principal in August of 2002. She became principal of Richmond High School in September of 2012. Prior to that administration experience at high school, she served as principal at St. Clement's Catholic High School beginning in 1993. She taught business education, computers, was chairperson of the steering committee. She was the chairperson of the computer department and the junior moderator. While at St. Clement's, she undertook the North Central accreditation process, which is a huge undertaking, just for the school and encouraged staff to attend any workshops. From 1983 to 1987, she was a part-time business education teacher at Macomb Community College. Throughout her entire career, she has voted time to provide school activities, countless homecomings, proms, dances, athletic events, et cetera. She has a master's degree in administration from Wayne State University and a bachelor's of business education from Eastern Michigan University. While at Richmond High School, Miss Michon's passion was about changing the demographics of the high school from being an excellent athletic, promoting more of the academic side, and I truly, I know she has done that, and she loves her legacy here. Her passion is in CTE. I have never met someone more passionate about career and technical education. To be honest, I wish she was governor many years ago, when they took the CTE funds away and realized now they made a mistake. You know, when I arrived in the district four years ago, Miss Michon was very instrumental. I can, I can honestly say, she will let you know her opinion. She does it professionally. I respect her as a colleague. I probably have tested her patience, many, hopefully to make her a better person and make me a better person. We have had countless conversations to how can we help students at Richmond. She has truly been the marketing or the driving force behind the recent CTE courses that we have. And I can work with her conceptual ideas, but the legwork, the groundwork to get it up and running is really a result of her action. From bringing back the criminal justice program, which was many years struggling trying to find someone, to the culinary arts program, the EMT program, the television production program that we have, the outstanding AIS program is one of the, probably the best program in the state of Michigan, which is recognized, to launching cybersecurity next year for our high school students. So I can't thank you enough for your years of service for Richmond, for the students. You have made all of us a better person just by your presence in the year. So thank you very much.
I can't control what he says.
I asked if this was a roast, and he said no. Miss Michon and I go way back. I grew up through the administrative ranks. I've been in administration 18 years, 17 of those I've been with, Miss Michon. Miss Michon is like a sister to me, one that I don't fight with that much, like my other sister. But Mrs. Michon is very passionate about kids. She's very passionate about doing the right thing, very dedicated to kids, puts in countless, countless hours. I will miss seeing your Jeep next year, not on campus, because we know Miss Michon's in when their Jeep's here, sometimes on Saturdays and Sundays. We have, we have had numerous great times together. I think we've even cried together. She's, we've had passionate disagreements. That's her Italian and Irish and my German and Polish. But I will say that at the end of the day, when we've had passionate disagreements, that the mutual respect that we have for each other and the respect for the positions that we held and the idea that students come first has gotten Miss Michon and I through everything, and you will not find a natural lady. Okay. Next is Mrs. Nolan. Mrs. Nolan has, thank you for your 22 years serving the organization, students, colleagues, parents, and the community. I didn't know all your whole career was here, though. I thought you were so honest. Learned something today. You've taught, in the 10 years I've been with you, all 6th grade, and you've been my rock down there in 6th grade, so I'm kinda scratching my head moving forward here. The future is moving with wings, and we went away from teaming, and we did all these things. You were always solid down there and held everything together. Great leader down there. Chris had the ability to challenge her students every day in the thought process and also teach them the joy of learning. Mrs. Nolan and I have had many conversations about how education is circular, like we're circling back to the 70s, because 70s was discovery education, having kids hands-on and using manipulatives and discovering why they're doing things, and that's definitely where we're at today. So going from that to being traditional to, back to the hands-on and challenging kids to think, I would say that you embrace that extremely well, and you're a risk taker, and you're very successful at it. She is in charge of our Builders Club, and our Builders Club, when I first took over 10 years ago, I was like, okay, what are we building? And it's a service organization, and they do a lot of tremendous things for the community. She has brought many innovative ideas into her classroom to get students interested in science and math. She started our school store. She leads our Student of the Month program, which is a big undertaking. And she's a proud member of the HRAE and an advocate for the profession. Mrs. Nolan, you will be missed. And yes, you are welcome back on that first day. All right. Mrs. Graham, 27 years of service to the organization, students, colleagues, parents, and the community. Taught at numerous levels throughout your career here at Richmond Community Schools. You worked both at elementary and middle school, and you finished your career as our 6th grade ELA teacher, and I would say for three years in a row, your NDLA students outperformed every other teacher in their growth goals. So you get a lot out of your students, and they definitely grow, and that relationship piece that you build with your students that work hard for you. Let's see. You, when I first got there, you were in 5th grade, and we teamed in 6th grade, and we came up with an idea as a staff and, you know, through the company to go into more of a junior high model. And in order to do that, I needed a solid ELA person. And I know you and Mr. Clinton had a great working relationship, partnership for many years, and I talked you into, going into 6th grade, I hope that's not why you're not retiring. But talked you into trying it and never looked back. You're very successful at it, very dedicated in the approach to your teaching and having kids ready and the supplies ready, and them knowing what they're doing from one activity to the next and the transitions and on task. It's no doubt why your scores are so good, along with the number one reason is relationships. You are, in my opinion, truly a lifelong learner. You put a lot into your career in mentoring students and fellow colleagues. I would say probably to the point of anxiety, working hard for them and wanting them to do so well that you took it on personally. And you've been instrumental in replacing Mrs. Pliegans a few years ago. In our March is Reading Month, Mrs. Pliegans did an excellent job, and the program didn't even miss a beat with you taking it over, and we always knew that was under control. And you coordinate many field trips, and you try to make it as fun as possible for the students of Richmond Middle School. You will be missed. All right, last, and I'm off the hook. Mrs. Boz, come on down. 18 years in Richmond Community Schools. You're finishing your career in the 6th grade. You were at the elementary last year, and came back this year. I've said it to you before, and I'll say it here, that I don't care what subject you were assigned to teach, you would pull a A-plus. Your dedication, your preparation, your wanting to be prepared and give it all for your students, there's no doubt in my mind, no matter what we assign to you, whether you had a degree in it or not, you'd be extremely successful. The thing that I like best is you have that ELA background, and you take that ELA background into science, no matter what you're teaching, because literacy is the key, and you and I both agree with that. And I think that part of the, Mrs. Graham has done an excellent job bringing up those scores, but I think with having you and Miss Nolan and Mr. Day, that team of literacy concepts have done a tremendous job. You also are helping with the school store, which is excellent, and now three people that started it, that worked at our dawn. Will you write that down, Ms. Boz? I believe that you have the ability to change people's lives. You share the excitement of learning with students and colleagues alike. You are passionate, again, like I said, about teaching and inspiring others, and you're willing to share ideas, and you're also willing to give counterpoints of view if you feel it's in the best interest of kids or how kids learn. And you too will be missed very much, Ms. Boz.
It is my honor and distinct privilege to welcome Mrs. Worth. Come on up, please. Now, to begin the meeting, I did offer Mrs. Worth, I said, if you wanted to speak, come on up, but she said, no, I'm not quite ready for that. But once again, Mrs. Worth has been in education for 33 years. 20 of those years have been at Richmond Community Schools, at the elementary, teaching 3rd grade mostly in the last few years, 4th grade. I've had the privilege to work with Mrs. Worth for the last two years, so trying to get as much as I can in those two years. But one thing I really noticed is her energy she had every day, always a smile on her face, welcoming students, and really made the students feel they were welcome and important every single day in everything that they did. And that really showed on the student performance. She's a great teammate for the fellow teachers, always willing to listen to ideas, share ideas, and I always felt privileged that we could have some honest discussions. Always know I was able to ask her some ideas, being the new administrator last year, and she was able to just give me some feedback, which was very beneficial and very useful. I know she's very involved in the community, just by anything that we did at the elementary. Mrs. Worth was there helping out, whether it was McStaff night at McDonald's, Christmas concerts in Richmond. She's always there, willing to help out backstage, help organize the students, be part of it. So she really took an interest in her students and everything that they did. Mrs. Worth was the Teacher of the Year last year, recognized by colleagues and also by students and parents, so it was a great honor on her part. And I thought would be very nice is I had some students last year write some notes to her and some things, so I just wanna highlight those again, just in case you haven't read those lately. So one student just stated she's always happy to see her students every day. That showed in, at times, if I would do tours for new families, and they were 4th grade students, it was always kind of nice to peek down hallways, see which doors were open after hours or just sometime during the day, and Mrs. Worth's doors open, and she had a free moment. I would always introduce her as one of the 4th grade teachers, because she's a definitely chairperson, a cheerleader for the district, and always welcomed families, even as they were looking at schools to possibly attend. Another student just wrote that, Mrs. Worth, every day she's a big help in my life, so having that huge impact, not only in school, but their everyday life. Mrs. Worth is wonderful. She laughs, and sometimes she's sarcastic, but in a good way. And I had to read this one, because I think even last year we got a pretty good laugh out of this one. Thirdly, she is all about school and math. She even likes, as a friend, Mr. Koachin. Hard to believe, but yeah, love what these students are writing. And one student says that she's gonna have, that Mrs. Worth has the biggest heart, which is by the best way to describe Mrs. Worth, not only for her education, her career, but just as a person. And I know just the other day, maybe a couple weeks ago, I'll kind of blend it together in the end of the year, but I had the opportunity and the privilege to meet her daughters, meet her family, and her grandson Hugo. So I can just tell that her family's really lucky that she has some more time to spend with them. So once again, it's been great two years. Wish I knew you sooner and had more opportunity to spend some time with you, but I really cherish the last two years. So congratulations. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One last time. Okay, next. ABM Custodial Service.
As been reported to you in the past, Richmond Community Schools put out the bid in partnership with New Haven Community Schools, our custodial services. It's been three years and at the end of the contract, we put out the bid. After reviewing the bids, specifications, my recommendation to the board is going with ABM. Here tonight is Craig Wall, who I think is gonna do most of the presentation, and Todd Fleming. Oh, call it Kyle, I knew that was right, because we already put out the hits last week. They are from ABM. They're gonna go over a PowerPoint or a short presentation with you to give you a perspective of their company and what we are looking forward to.
Wanted to thank the board, Superintendent Holtsley, Kami, and Business Ops. Thank you very much for having us. Certainly wanted to stop by and introduce ourselves to you formally, tell you a little bit about who we are and what we put together for you. So, it's a pretty exciting opportunity for our company to have the opportunity to partner, and the key word there being partner, with a district like Richmond in conjunction with New Haven Schools. So, ultimately, to give you a little bit of a background, but ABM is a company that starts first with safety. Every conference call, every meeting, every day, starts with a level of safety moment. But the bottom line is, the most important thing for us is at the end of the day, when everybody makes it home safe. So, if you had zero tolerance for accidents, if all things in life were done ninety-nine percent, point nine correctly, this is what we'd have to accept. Two unsafe plane landings per day at O'Hare Airport, Chicago, twenty thousand incorrect prescriptions every year, five hundred incorrect hospital operations each week, and twenty-two thousand checks deducted from the wrong bank account each hour. So that's how important we view safety, if you think about it that way. So that's how we operate our everyday. A little bit about who we are at ABM. ABM is a company that specializes certainly in custodial maintenance and ground services, but we also are unique in the fact that, unlike some of our competitors, we do operate outside that field and do encompass the total building envelope. So when you look at our HVAC, our electrical, our energy management, our emission critical systems, marking transportation, we're gonna head with a gambit of what you're looking for in the building envelope as it relates to your facility services. This is a little bit about who we are in Michigan. You know, from the standpoint of an employee count, we're a pretty large company, but we like to keep it small. You know, we're out of Troy, we're about forty minutes down the road, and I think that's the nice part about having this local service. We like to partner with districts that are important to the communities, and obviously that's the case here in Richmond. As I mentioned earlier, some of the unique elements of what we are outside of just the custodial services and all the facility services, but events, energy, our mechanical plumbing services, landscaping, and marketing, and transportation. So it's certainly something where we're not operating with tunnel vision. We try to operate with the understanding that we're a partner, part of the family, part of the Richmond community, and ultimately you'll get, you know, that level of facilities action if we were fortunate enough to partner with the district. This is kind of interesting, I was just looking at some of the website information between the two districts, you know, empowering students to be successful in a global community, New Haven empowering students to change the world. It's a nice partnership to see the synergies between the two districts. And then I wanted to obviously bring in our ABM side of our core competencies, but the one that's really important for us is our mission, which is to make a difference, every person, every day. See that in the bottom left corner? That is really what drives our company on an everyday basis, to make a difference, every person, every day. So a little bit about what we put together for you folks and what we're bringing to the table. As I mentioned, the local site service out of Troy, we're transition experts from the standpoint of a contractor to contractor switch. You won't find anybody better in the industry. We'll try to make it as seamless as possible. There's nothing totally seamless about a transition, but we strive to make it as seamless as possible. The unique element of what we have in our client partners is a ninety-six percent client retention rate. We're pretty proud about that. So, once we have a partnership set up with the district, we kind of stick around, so. Over three thousand employees in the state, subject matter experts, and a good-sized company that we can help with some of the understandings of how we can afford to do business with you, which is, you know, leveraging our national purchasing powers when it comes to supplies and whatnot. We have over three hundred fifty K twelve school districts we operate with, so it's not our first rodeo. We've done this before. Five hundred million square feet served annually, and this is throughout the country, obviously, but our, in our Troy office, we're obviously a little bit smaller than that. But, again, the client retention rate, in Michigan, we have over fifteen hundred employees. The salary managers and staff are over fifty, and the unique element of that, if you see underneath that, is the fifty-six percent were promoted from within. The point being is boots on the ground are making careers out of their employment with ABM and joining the ABM family. So, you're talking about people, you know, and salaries and driving around company cars. It's a great story to see somebody rising up from the custodial level. Currently, twenty-four educational accounts, twenty-one of which are K-12 and seventeen are in southeast Michigan, so we're heavily in this side of the state. Regional offices in Troy, where our HR department is located as well, recruitment and hiring, equipment warehousing, and all of our maintenance repair for our equipment in Troy, right down the street. So, we have a number of opportunities to swap out bad equipment, do the loaner programs, some of that stuff is charged, so it's a nice feature to have a company of our size that has the ability to do that for you. You can see some of our local partnerships, Romeo, McCoon Community, Rochester Schools, Royal, just a few of our local partners here. But the interesting thing is, most of these folks up here just recently went through renewal, so they've decided, again, once again, re-up with ABM. A little bit of a quick background of our operational approach. I think the one thing that stands out for me here is, if you look at the second sentence and the underlying two words is trusted advisor. That was the mantra that we spoke to, the administration, about what separated us from our competition, is we wanted to be trusted advisors, not just custodians, people that could help raise the level, the bar, provide a service level that was unique and superior, but also to take a trusted advisor position with our staff and our employees, to make them bigger and better. If a district employee was doing great, we were hopefully gonna make them better. So ultimately, being a trusted advisor, but if you look at our operational model down here, it spans the gamut. Our recruitment, our hiring, and our retention is the biggest part. We live in a very challenging state, there's no question about it. We recruit, we recruit, and we recruit. Once your district is fully staffed, we'll still be interviewing, it's just that challenging state of Michigan, but we think we've nailed it here with a proposal and a wage rate that is working very closely with the district to maximize that, in some cases, give them raises that they weren't necessarily getting currently.
I could interrupt. You're already in full staff. What did it mean?
There we go. So, you know, again, that's where we're talking about the retention piece. That's unusual, too, for a district to switch over like that and have one-hundred percent staffing like that. So it's a credit to the people that already work for Richmond Community School District that want to still be a part of this community, it's a credit to you as an organization. What separates us a little bit more is, as we do the research and the data analysis, for example, in our wage analysis here, we're not determining or guessing what the wage rates are for staff. We took the median salaries for the area, enhanced them, and gave you more than what you're at, more than what the area is paying, making sure that the staff is, you know, slightly overpaid of what, you know, they can get next door. We want to make sure that the staff is compensated accordingly and happy and not leaving. So, we're doing data analysis that supports this. This is very unique to our industry, by the way, this wage analysis. More often than not, it's your history base or your guesswork to determine wage rates. At ABM, that's not the case. Training's huge. Every day is another training element. If it's not safety, it's hazmat, it's understanding chemicals and supplies, equipment. Again, without the training, there's potentially issues with not going home safe, and that's just not gonna happen at ABM. We're gonna pride ourselves on supporting that employee with training. Quality assurance, one unique thing. We have a program that we're putting together for Richmond, again, in conjunction with the district, where you'll have a minimum of twenty-five inspections per week, accountability platform that's all based on software, through an iPad, and again, twenty-five inspections a week, minimum. If there's twenty-four, lots of bells and whistles go off and people with titles like Todd's, you know, get a little bit upset, and, you know, that's not gonna happen. So we make sure that we get it done for you with our accountability. But this is a huge part of understanding what you're doing, is to have the communication, to understand, you know, what's working, what ain't working, and here it is, it's really our quality assurance program here. So we're gonna inspect, we're gonna correct, we're gonna rechain or report. We meet, we like to meet with what we call our CEOs of building, which are building principals monthly, on a principal report card. We meet three to four times a year with high-level staff administration and our client business reviews, talking about what's working, what's not working, setting benchmarks, understanding how we can improve, year-in, month-in, weekend. It's just something that's part of our DNA at ABM. This is the org chart that we put together for Richmond, and this is in our base bid, and what we've come to really separate setup is something a little more along the recommended bid here, and we're hoping we can get this approved tonight. But if you can see, the unique element of what we're doing is adding skilled trades in terms of an electrician, an HVAC tech, and a general maintenance tech, along with high-level skilled management to share across two districts, ultimately dividing that cost. It's a unique approach. It's fairly revolutionary in the fact that it's not often done. We've done, we've started this model in a couple of different places, but Richmond and New Haven were one of the first models to actually adopt it. This is gonna be a big win, and we're looking forward to this being a benchmark and a flagship for ABM. So we're really excited to partner with you and to be able to showcase this type of model. And again, this comes from your administration and your Board of Education. And then ultimately, we're at that price point. The reason I included this is to understand where you're at financially, but the unique element of it is to understand in the year two and the year three, that there are increases in the annual revenue, and those costs are directly going back to employees for merit increases. It'll be one-hundred percent transparent to the district and the board, and that's not to say that everybody's gonna get a raise, but they are merit-based raises and they're built into the budget so that everybody understands that that's how we have to operate our systems. The employees that are performing well must be rewarded for what they're doing, just for employee satisfaction, which is a huge role we do. So that gives you an idea where we're at financially. Benefits of partnering, you're partnering with an integrated facility services provider. This is not just custodial, and we're not dabbling in maintenance and grounds, it's skilled trades. We have engineering staff throughout the country. You're looking at a fully integrated facility services firm. We optimize all forms of different software and technology, which you've seen in our quality assurance, but also in our CMS programs. We utilize all of that data and reporting to give information to the districts. Customized solutions, again, a very unique bill with the administration here in this model. And a commitment to a cultural fit, we're trying to become, our goal is to be part of the family. You know, the community events, sponsorship opportunities, you know, these types of things, we want to be involved. We want you to ask us about that stuff. We don't want to, you know, run away from that, because that's us being part of the family, part of the community, that's our goal, and that's what we're trying to do here. That's a kind of a quick overview of who we are. But once again, it's been a fantastic opportunity to present to you. I mean, these are rare opportunities. You know, if there were any questions, certainly, Todd is our operations regional manager that would be working directly with the district. And I wanted to make sure he was involved here. He's been working very closely with your administration, putting together the hiring process at this point. But if there are any questions regarding our programs, we'd certainly love to answer them.
I just wanted a couple things just to clarify with the board. You've received in your newsletter kind of the structure, this per-year cost is more than what we're currently paying, but when you take out the contracted services that we are currently paying, the supplies and this cost is, they're ordering the supplies, so that's not a necessary cost, it's built in, it actually works out to pretty much a net zero for the district when you start looking at the current contracted cost by having an onsite electrician, HVAC, just a general carpenter, maintenance person, plumber that can fix things that we are currently paying an outside agency for. For, just a recap, we did put the bid out, as I said, with New Haven. We've been doing a lot, we've had a lot of successful partnerships with New Haven in working with their superintendent. We felt this could be the next step that can leverage for both of our districts, what we were both looking for. So that the board knows, the New Haven Board of Education has approved this contingent on the Richmond Board of Education, but they are very excited to be partnering also. Any questions or...
So what would the response kind of need for plumbing, electrician, what, from the time an error is reported or a problem is reported to fixing it, what's the response?
I would have to say, it kind of depends on the severity of the issue. But having three maintenance guys within the district within twenty-four hours at least, if not sooner. You know, it depends on the workload, what they got going, again, the severity of the issue. If there's water pouring out, but bad, then we're gonna give it a brief break.
So are they onsite then, all day, or where are they?
They're between the two districts.
So three people between the two districts?
Two districts. So if they're working out here, they're at New Haven, and they're a call away of twenty minutes, they're gonna drive to work. Where currently, I'm working with a contractor, trying to find one that can come in and fix it.
Those three skilled people are dedicated to these two districts. When they're working, they'll be nowhere else but here.
And you said that the employees we have now, everybody is on board with you?
Yes.
That's huge, as the board member...
With the exception of, yeah. Okay, we'll save it.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
The piece that was enticing to me, or when I listened to, we had, I think I recorded six companies bid, ABM was the only one that presented an alternative bid, which was somewhat unique to what we were looking for. Very few of them had some type of cost of living increase or potential for an employee. Our current custodians are making the exact same wage that they made three years ago. And again, I realize there's a lot of that in various organizations, but most of our employees are making minimum wage. And so, to support and be able to survive on that, it is, it's an increase for them coming to ABM to start off. And again, any future would depend on their productivity and their performance, as I said.
Which is another huge bonus. Absolutely.
You're gonna find that the quality of work improves, and the quality of employee improves, plus, one of the workouts is gonna be April night, but you're able to keep those that you want to keep. Now you're able to pay more than a greater goal.
When you say, okay, finding twenty-five checks, was that a week, you said, quality checks?
They typically do twenty-five inspections a week. Now, an inspection, it's kind of misleading. One inspection is misleading, so one inspection would be the media center. When I come in here and inspect the media center, I'm looking at fifty different things, rating them. You know, I'm looking at the ceiling tiles, the lights, the walls, the windows, the floors. So, it's, you'd be bothered at the amount of data you get after just twenty-five inspections. That'll take us some time to get that set up and rolling, because we have to basically map out the whole district.
That's been the conversation that I've had in any of the, I must say, complaints from staff members, whether, you know, their garbage didn't get emptied, or, you know, the lights have been burned out for two days and it hasn't been changed and so forth. That's what we're trying to address, so that that shouldn't be what our staff worries about, it's just they're here to work with kids, and that's what my hope and focus is.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Big friends.
Okay, next. Two thousand seventeen eighteen school improvement plans.
Okay. Mr. Burtmeyer had a, actually, a family emergency, so I'm going to partner with the administrators on the school improvement plans. I just realized I did not put the PowerPoint on the laptop, so, I'm gonna do this. Now, you're able to pay more than a greater goal.
When you say, okay, finding 25 checks, was that a week, you said, quality checks?
They typically do 25 inspections a week. Now, an inspection, it's kind of misleading. One inspection is misleading, so one inspection would be the media center. When I come in here and inspect the media center, I'm looking at 50 different things, rating them. You know, I'm looking at the ceiling tiles, the lights, the walls, the windows, the floors. So, it's, you'd be bothered at the amount of data you get after just 25 inspections. But that'll take us some time to get that set up and rolling, 'cause we have to basically map out the whole district.
That's been the conversation that I've had in any of the, I must say, complaints from staff members, whether, you know, their garbage didn't get emptied, or, you know, the lights been burned out for two days and hasn't been changed and so forth. That's what we're trying to address, so that, that shouldn't be what our staff worries about, it's just they're here to work with kids. And that's what my hope and focus is.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. 2017-18 school improvement plans.
Okay. Mr. Burtmeyer had a, actually, a family emergency, so I'm going to partner with the administrators on the school improvement plans. I just realized I did not put the PowerPoint on the laptop, so I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna, 'cause I'm gonna control it from here, so when I turn over, you wanna speak from there, if you wanna come up to the podium, however, whatever works for you guys. All right. The district school improvement plan for the 17-18 is focusing on, again, our core areas that are required. Part of the school improvement plan is required by the state. Some of it is outlined, that you have to choose a goal in that area. For the district, we're focusing on math, reading, writing, social studies, and science. This is the five cores, if you will, with two of them being the language arts field. A review of what we've accomplished in 17-18. We have been focusing on enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support. That's been in every building in various fashion. It is now on all the schools' websites, and you can actually see what does a tier-one intervention look like from a classroom teacher, which is where 80% of the interventions occur, whether you're even working with high-end students or low-end students. Then, tier-two, which is the next roughly 10 to 15%, and ultimately, tier-three. We have been focusing in training staff that are new to the district and classroom instruction that works. We are continuing the DRA that's been implemented at the elementary school. And we currently, even though we've taken the M-Step, do not have officially the state data for the M-Step to report at this time. So, I'm gonna turn over to Ms. Mashon. In your packet, you will see the lengthy documents for each of the school improvement plans. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Mashon to recap the 17-18.
Okay. Okay, these are, these were our goals for this school year. All students in Richmond High School will improve their proficiency in mathematics. All students at Richmond High School will become proficient in evidence-based reading and writing. That's really important, because that's how we switched from the ACT to the SAT. All students at Richmond High School will become proficient in social studies, and all students at Richmond High School will become proficient in science. Our school, all of our goals at the high school are all related or revolved around our SAT scores. Just some facts and some information about this year. Our social studies M-Step score, we were five, we were fifth in the county. Our reading and writing, that's that evidence-based reading, we were third in the county. And our science scores on the M-Step, we were number one in the county. We did have, and we continue to, work on our math. I think the biggest thing that we saw this year from our scores from last year and the year before is that we took a six-point jump in our math scores. That is the biggest jump we have had in math here at the high school in a long time. Some of the things I think that we did that helped that out is we started to do our pull-out for our math prep, for our bottom 30, to get them prepared to take that SAT. I am, I know that I will not be here, but I am going to be looking at our data, because I wanna really see what we did this year. We added a boot camp for our math. Again, math is the area that I know that at the high school, we really need to work on. We would have a much higher composite between our math and our reading and writing if we could just get those math scores up. So, we did a boot camp. It met during lunchtime every Tuesday and Thursday. We had 30 kids, Mrs. Van Ham ran it. We also then did a, after-school, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, another boot camp during the whole month. This happened during the whole month of March, with, again, the hope and the scores that we can get those math scores up. We continued with, we did some more this year with that evidence-based reading and writing. We introduced to the whole staff, we've been using Newzilla, which is a really good software package that allows us to, depending on the student's reading level, we can pick their lexile, so that we can set it to every student in our building, no matter where they're at. So, again, that's what we did this year. And then, I think Mr. Walmsley moved us on as far as what we're going into next year. We will continue to have only, actually, I should say, we are only gonna have three goals next year, academic goals. We believe that our, that evidence-based reading and writing will work fine in our science area, and it will work fine in our social studies. If we can keep that piece up, we don't need to really stress that. A lot of our teachers anyway, like our science department. Piece we've been working on is the graphs, how to interpret graphs and things, and we're doing that right inside of our reading piece, so that our students are understanding that and how that works. We will be choosing one A effective goal. I'm leaving that up to the new principal at the high school. We just have all of our data back from our surveys that we did. We also have our strategic plan that we worked on. So, we, I will leave that piece up in the fall. My school improvement committee know about that. That's their first goal, to start the year, to get an A effective goal. Take a look at communication, or bullying, all based upon our survey data, and, again, partly that strategic plan that we worked on here in the district. We're gonna continue training our staff in Newzilla. This, again, this is a really good software package. Our core teachers have it down. I need to get my CTE teachers on board and getting them to use it, so that we are doing it across the curriculum. We're gonna train, we have one teacher on the staff, Mrs. Germaine. She was trained in the Number Talks program that's put out by the ISD. She is in turn going to train the rest of our math department, and then with the thought of, we will then look at our whole staff. Do we need to get everybody on board? Again, to help improve and help strengthen that math area. We will continue to get a conference. I, like I say, I wish our scores were out now. I'd really like to see how we did. The staff will be looking in the fall on where we're at on our SAT or PSAT, just again, to see where we're at, where we need to do, and make adjustments in our school improvement plan. I have felt that's the biggest piece this high school has constantly done. As we look at the data, we adjust, we make changes, and we move forward. I think I have one more slide? Or no?
I think you do, but I...
Okay.
My fingers are sticking, so give me a second here.
Okay. We will continue to run our corrective reading and our math support classes. This is another piece we started a couple of years ago. We will be continuing to run them. That's for our bottom 30, again, to strengthen and shore up their weak areas. We will continue to do a pull-out. We did a pull-out this year for both the math and the reading level, a reading and writing piece. Next year, we're just gonna do a pull-out for the reading and writing, because we are going to, for the first time, have an SAT math prep class. We put it into our course selection. We have a full class of 35 kids. So, again, I hope that will help. We're gonna run our boot camp, again, during the month of March, again, stressing our math areas. And then finally, we, I know it's at the top end of things, but we're offering one, two, three additional AP classes at the high school. We're gonna have AP Biology, AP Stats, and AP Psychology. Again, I think this will only strengthen our scores and our school improvement here at Richmond High School. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you go back, two years ago, we have reading and writing as separate school improvement goals. But like Mrs. Mashon said, when you look at reading and writing, and if you're doing correctly, and you're using research-based strategies and literacy concepts, our reading improvement program, and our CITW strategies, the reading and writing actually fit together as ELA, but they also fit in our science class, in our math class, social studies, and even our specials. Literacy is a main focus at our mess with our content area of writing in each quarter. We used to do Article a Week with all the different writing styles, and now, now we do content area of writing with rubrics that are created by our ELA teachers with our science content teachers or math content teachers to explain what those rubrics mean and how to grade it for consistency purposes. And we also do sustained sound reading or self-selected sound reading for 20 minutes every day, where kids can read something that isn't mandated or told to read by their teacher, something they're interested in, 'cause we really wanna push literacy. So, this year, 17-18, this year and the next year will be the first year that the reading and the writing are combined. So, we had six goals, but now it's down to five. The current year, which is that 16-17, the only difference with 17-18 was that the ELA and the writing and reading was together. So, now we're down to our five goals. We're continuing the last goal listed there, communicate with parents, community members, and state partners through a variety of media. With each of these five goals, there's anywhere from 12 to 18 activities. And those 12 to 18 activities are embedded in everything that we do. So, it doesn't matter if we're teaching math, or ELA, or social studies, or Spanish that we're using in the classroom instruction networks. We have four teachers that have not been trained in yet, they're gonna be trained at the end of this month. And then in mathematics, we're going on year two of our CPM, which is our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade series, college preparatory math. It's a teacher-created resource. It's not our curriculum, but it's a tool for us to deliver our mathematics curriculum, and it's project-based and discovery, explaining why math is the way it is. Instead of just memorizing formulas and chucking out numbers, you gotta really sit down and explain why, why does this happen? So, we've, the teachers this year with the CPM have, with the M-Step and the end of the year with the NWA test, my math teachers have said that usually they're frustrated or struggle with the M-Step or NWA-type test with the questions they ask. They said, "This is the first year," and it was a struggle with the new implementation of it this year, with the mindset, training that mindset of our mathematics students to persevere and work through problems and not give up and find a way, find a solution. You know, "We're just not gonna give you the answer. You know, we need to figure out why this is the way it is." They were very confident this year and happy that this is the first year the students weren't frustrated. They actually thought the M-Step was, with the wording of the problems was actually easier than the types of problems they ever learned in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade class that were all multi-step problems. So, that was extremely encouraging. I too, like Mrs. Mashon, am looking forward to seeing what the results are. Science, next year will be our third year of the Next Generation Science Standards. That was rolled out two years ago, and we're looking forward to continuing working with the eBooks, with our science curriculum. We're excited to have the Next Generation Science Standards. This summer, we're hoping that the social studies standards get adopted. It's been a long time waiting, and the path or the mapping of the sixth, seventh, and eighth, what's weird about middle schools is that they'll give you the content, and they'll say, "Well, you teach how you wanna teach it. You wanna do East Africa in sixth grade, you wanna do it in seventh grade." But with Mrs. Shaina, Mrs. Jar, and Mr. Day, what's being proposed at the state, exactly how we have ours laid out. So, it won't be a change when they, when they vote for it, they vote for it. We were, when you average all of the 11 M-Step tests together, and you count-by-county ranking out of the 42 districts or middle schools, when you average them all out, you're about sixth. So, we were in the top 10, we were sixth. Hopefully, we'll get to fifth and fourth, our goals to constantly improve. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, as we look at the elementary goals, these are very similar to last year's. I'm just kinda looking at the dates up there. To update this even more, elementary's now down to three goals for this, for the next school year. When we went to our facilitators of school improvement, the ISD, some of those consultants recommended that, since there's no state M-Step test assessments for social studies and for science, that we focus on our three goals about students becoming proficient readers, proficient writers, and improving their math proficiency. Now, for our school improvement planning, as we look forward to the 2019-2020 school year, that's when we'll be looking at adjusting our goals and including a couple of additional goals as we look at our strategic planning and some of the goals that come out of that process also. So, for this company school year, we're gonna focus on those three areas. Some of the strategies that we're using to achieve those goals. Next slide, please. Now, there's many different activities, different objectives, I'll kinda give you the big picture. I just listed the three strategies, so the three main things that we'll do. Looking at next year, with our reading, we're gonna focus a lot on the balanced literacy, something that elementary's been doing for quite a while. But as a school improvement team and feedback from our staff during PLC times and staff professional development, we wanna just focus on those eight areas a little bit more, bring those back into focus, and, you know, have a little more discussion about what can be used in the classroom, what teachers are currently using, and what they can still incorporate. It's a multifaceted approach and best practice, using all eight of the different strategies for the balanced literacy to help all students with all different learning abilities. For reading, especially at the elementary level, differentiation, in each grade, you can have students at all different reading levels. We do look at NWA assessments and results, we look at DRA, to really look at pinpoint where students are, helps to differentiate, put those students in their guided reading groups, using the literacy library. I know Mr. Klesby talked about at previous school board meetings, does know how to look at those individual students and really focus on them. And then you heard a little bit about eSparks. This is part of our school improvement plans. It's all title staff is using eSparks, along with eSparks, some of the other technology that we're using. All teachers do have account for MobiMax, which is similar to eSparks. This is used by general education in the classroom. They once again look at the students' individual needs and where they need to improve at. And then next slide for writing. Just once again, focusing on balanced literacy through some professional development that we've had at the ISD. We actually started planning ahead for next year, and when we're last staff PDs, what we presented to the staff, because some were so anxious that once I told them about this, they wanted it now, so they can actually look at it over the summer, is that we have the pre-K literacy framework, which is by the MISD. So, once again, just gives that framework that goes along, supports balanced literacy, and this will be, you know, mainly focused a lot of our professional development or professional learning communities next year, as we refocus and just pinpoint some of those areas of balanced literacy that may not be used in the classroom as much as it should be. And then for our last goal, for our math goal, looking at, once again, which is also in the district improvement plan, classroom instruction that works. Last school year, I've kinda just looked at in general, reviewing what some of those strategies are this current school year, they were just finished. We looked at what's being used in the classroom, so we had some data collection. Staff members are always happy when they saw those charts in the mailboxes, kinda just keep track of what strategies are being used, how they're being used. And then next year, taking a step further, we're gonna look at what strategies are not being used as often in the classroom, and why aren't those strategies being used, and what can we do to support each other, to get ideas and learn from each other about using all the different classroom instruction that works strategies in the classroom. Working on cooperative learning, kinda moving away a little bit from, you know, the math with the teacher in front of the classroom, kinda instructing the students, but now a lot more group work, a lot more cooperative learning groups, a lot more initiatives to get those students to learn math, just in a different way than the traditional teacher explaining it and the students practicing on it. So, a little more hands-on with the math. And then once again, math using eSpark also to support those students in the Title I and the Tier II interventions. Thank you.
I just have one question, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, when you're talking the classroom instruction that works, we know that's what we already use, so you're saying, taking that and delving into the math? Is that, is that what you're saying? That there's something specifically in there that relates to math?
Yes, we're gonna look at the strategies that we are currently using, and then we'll look at ones that aren't used as much. 'Cause there's certain areas that teachers just, you know, routinely use this, they'll use the same one often, because it works. But once again, we're gonna look at how can we expand that and look at some of the strategies that may not be used as much. that may not be used as much. Also, that'll help lead to higher thinking, a higher order of thinking activities also.
And that's through the ISD, that classroom instruction that works, right?
Yes, all of our teachers have been trained, except for one teacher has been trained. So once again, we're just continuing that process, but just want to have a little more focus, a little more target on certain instructions that can help students.
Thank you.
So part of the school improvement is the district plan is submitted in, at the end of this month, and then the individual building plans have to be submitted by September 1st. Our goal is to get them submitted before the administration leaves for the summer.
So at our next meeting, we'll be approving them, is what you're saying? Okay. Next, middle school grading policy and standard-based report cards.
Just before Mr. Bartels begins, we began this process last year in converting the elementary report cards to standard-based. This year has been a, I won't say a learning curve, but I think the staff have really customized to what works in their grade level. At the beginning of the year, they made parent packets to help parents understand the report cards, et cetera. And so now we have been spending this year working with the middle school team in converting the middle school reporting out to standard-based grades. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartels. While this is loading, well, seven years ago, when we as a district decided to study grades and what do grades mean, what do they stand for, we did a district study, reading Ken O'Connor's 15 grade level or fixes for grades, and we came up with, you know, the current 80/20 policy that is currently 512 this year. And with, because we wanted consistency from teacher to teacher, class to class, to, you know, so that an A in no matter what class you have, that 80% of it is based on assessments, 20% is the format of information. Seven years ago, the staff was excited to maybe go down to standard-based grading, and but we just implemented the 80/20 just to give a little history. And we wanted to maybe try it, but in the same breath, we said, "Well, we should probably give the 80/20, you know, more time to see its effectiveness on student achievement, not only in state standardized testing, but also our grades within our, within our own schools." So I truly believe that the 80/20 policy was the right way to go. And with the retakes, because I believe that, you know, kids learn at different paces, and it's an opportunity for those that are struggling or need a little extra help to bear down and work on what they need to work on to improve their grade, which is ultimately their future. And if they're learning and being more successful than we're achieving. So standard-based grading has always been on our radar at the middle school. It was very exciting when the elementary went to it two years ago. And this last year with, you know, moving totally away from grades, they were standard-based two years ago, but they reported out a grade at the end, and then this year without grades. It was very exciting for us. And Mrs. Gillespie, who's up here, head of the committee for us, is extremely passionate about standard-based grading. She and I, last year, she was new, and during one of our meetings, we were talking about the philosophy of standard-based grading and have we ever thought about it? And I told her the history of it, and she came to us with years of experience from Virginia School District where it was standard-based grading. So she's passionate about it, went through it. And then Mrs. Churchill also, you know, taught in North Carolina and Florida, she's done standard-based grading, and they, and understands the importance of grading to the standard. So, Mr. Gillespie, to make one story short, we sat down and with the lead of the elementary, and it just made sense to us to roll up our sleeves, get to work this year, and try to get it done. And so I had Mrs. Gillespie as our chair for, for the building, and we started, now I'll get to this in a second, but we started, set the stage in August, but our first committee meeting with everybody that was in the committee was in the November, December. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Gillespie at this time, and then we're going to go back and forth.
Hello, again, I'm fifth grade at the middle school. Very happy to be here as Mr. Bartels, I am very passionate about standard-based grading. As you know, our standards that are given to us through the state of Michigan are what we use to shape what we do with our kids every day. It's kind of where the teachers go. If we go back far enough, that's what we're looking at when we figure out what we're doing with our kids. So it only makes sense to then grade them based on the standards. So just a little background, we've got many experts in standard-based grading field. Dr. Reeves, this is a quote from him, he basically is saying that just because a student fails to meet the standard the first time, we shouldn't be accepting that, and I don't think we do. I think that's within the 80/20 policy that was adopted a while ago, with the opportunity to do a retake, but we also need to make sure that it is, as he says, a requirement to resubmit your work, that that's not acceptable, that you're, that you're not there yet. It's not necessarily your fault, or my fault, or anyone's fault, but we all need to take that opportunity to, to resubmit and, and show that you have learned. Ken O'Connor, grades need to be meaningful. In order for them to be meaningful, they should be based on those learning goals. Learning goals are what we as teachers pull out of those very wordy and sometimes confusing standards that are given. And we'll kind of look at that a little bit later. And then Rip warmly, another very animated proponent for our standard-based grading, just again trying to give you a quote that shows that it's all about mastering those, those learning standards, which are all from those big standards that we get. We need to make sure that the grades that we're giving our students and communicating to our parents actually communicate a level of learning and not just points earned.
We're going to watch two brief videos here.
Standard-based grading is an innovation in education that focuses on student learning and helps increase achievement. Instructional techniques in standard-based classrooms better engage students and foster positive learning environments. Rather than tracking a single overall grade, subjects are broken down into many smaller learning targets. Each target is a teachable concept students should master throughout the course. Learning targets are written in student-friendly language, so students can understand and participate in their learning. They link back to rubrics, which give concrete guidance on each target. As students work on activities, they can self-assess their progress. Teachers provide specific feedback to help students improve. Education becomes a conversation about skills, allowing students to engage in and take ownership of the process. In traditional grading, this sort of feedback is possible, but less common. Long score or assignments does not provide enough information for deep student engagement. While some good teachers do give helpful feedback, the structure of a traditional classroom makes it difficult. Scores in standard-based grading usually range from 1 to 4, reflecting the ladder of mastery, increasing in complexity. At the bottom, students have no understanding of the topic. As students learn, they climb over one as they gain basic understanding. They keep climbing until they reach the target. Standard-based grading data makes differentiated instruction easier to implement. When teachers have mastery information readily available, they can dynamically group students and give them level-up or grade lessons. Students at Level 1 get activities to help them reach Level 2. Level 2 students get activities to climb to Level 3. Classrooms break into smaller groups with students working independently on activities intended for their skill level. With relevant instruction, students are more engaged in their learning. They can see their efforts result in growth, reinforcing work ethic and good habits. Sometimes students take multiple attempts to move up the ladder. In standard-based grading, students can try and retry as they work toward the targets. High-stakes tasks are replaced with multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. This creates an emotionally safe environment where failure is temporary. Fear is removed in the classroom, urging students to stretch themselves, make mistakes, and learn. We hope you enjoyed this standard-based grading video, which is created by the team at Teachers, which provides soft.
And our last one.
Traditional versus standard-based grading systems. What are grades for anyway? Are grades about what students earn or about what students learn? In the traditional grading system, students are evaluated on a 100-point scale. At the end of the marking period, the teacher tallies up all the points earned, and evaluates that number by the points possible. And if you receive 92% of those points, you receive an A. A problem with this system is it encourages students to consider grades a higher priority than learning. Another problem is that it violates the basic principles of ratios. For example, if a student gets a zero, their score would be six times lower than the next grading interval. So how can we give an accurate grade? An accurate grade indicates where you are, not where you've been. This is what most people think success looks like. This is what it actually looks like. Learning can be a messy process of trial and error. It's like climbing a mountain. You set a goal and you set out to achieve it. There may be obstacles, but with practice, you overcome them and reach the top. In standard-based grading, the teacher sets clear, measurable learning goals. For example, at the end of this lesson, my students will be able to write an essay of at least 150 words. Then, for each task, a rubric is created. The rubric lets the student know what skills he will be learning and what he has to do to master that skill. Like this Ruber Camber, for example. Level 1 shows the student needs reteaching in order to meet the standard. Level 2 shows that the student has added some meat to their understanding. Level 3 shows proficiency. Level 4 shows the student exceeds the standard. The student may not get it right the first time, but he can keep trying until the skill is acquired. Or the teacher may decide to try another tactic to help the student along the path. Standard-based grading helps prepare our students for the real world, where the model in every quality-focused environment involves work, feedback, and improvement. It's also better adapted for the 21st century gamer culture, which understands the language of acquiring skills and moving up to the next level. The challenge with standard-based grading is that it takes a lot of front-end planning. Coming up with measurable outcomes for every assessment can be a daunting task, but it's worth it. When a teacher has a clear vision of what she expects for students to know and do, she can more easily communicate it. And when students clearly see the goal, they are more likely to reach it.
Grading, did you think I'll do? So we came up with a committee, and the committee was volunteer, sent out an invite to all staff members that were interested in being part of the standard-based grading. And these are the teachers that took us up on the offer. And again, we started at the end of November, beginning of December, at the beginning meeting every couple weeks for, you know, we set a half hour, but sometimes we got a great conversation, a couple 45 minutes to an hour, a couple, a couple times a month. And then these are our committee members here. We have a good mix, fifth grade teachers, sixth grade, math specials, social studies, the arts, and then Ms. Oregon and myself.
Great, so as we were looking at doing this, we had a little bit of a timeline. The first thing that we did was start to look at different report cards. How is this going to work at the middle school? So we went ahead and looked at the Lee Schools report card and said, "Okay, these are the things that we think will transfer nicely, or perhaps this is maybe something we need to tweak in order for it to work at the middle school, because we are high of age at the middle school, we're going to have some different, different needs there." So again, we had a lot of staff discussion, not only in the standard-based committee, but as, at staff meetings, on our Monday afternoon meetings. Just what are the pros of doing this and the cons? And a lot of the cons came from what you saw in the video there. It is a lot of work, front-end for us to look at every single standard and come up with that four-point rubric for every single thing that we teach. But in the end, we kept coming back to, "Well, it's for the students. We're here for the students, that's why we come every single day. And if we can give them better information about their learning progression, then we just, we just need to do it." So a lot, a lot of discussion about pros and cons, not only of standard-based grading, but also with the report cards. So then we had the committees created. Within, trying to see how I can explain, we had the standard-based committee, and then those people who were just listed on the slide became heads or co-leads within these others here, grade book, teacher learning and development, parent resources, and then assessments and rubrics. And the parent resource, I think most of you have in front of you, that was one of the things that we created, was that pamphlet. Meant to just give a very brief overview of what that is like, and then more information on, on the website. With the grade book committee, I think Mrs. Jar was in charge of that one. She and the other teachers on staff that worked on it, they looked at our SHINE, which is part of our PPIS program, and they changed, I think, just the first one, from safety to self-directed learner, so that we can then incorporate that. One of the big things with standard-based grading is to take out learner qualities from the grade that students earn. The academic grade should be separate from the behavior and effort and that. So as they looked at that, they came up with these that would be listed on the report card for each class. Organizing time, focus, self-control, or self-directed learner. Completing their work on time and quality work. Integrity, coming to class prepared, showing responsibility, following rules, and respect. Neighborly, using appropriate manners, being able to resolve conflicts. Engaged, putting in effort, listening and responding, collaborative groups, and being able to share and receive different information and ideas from others. And then how we would report that out on the report card would be with the numbers 1, 2, and 3. Again, those subcommittees from the standard-based groups came up with this, and then we talked about it as an entire staff, and we agreed that within, again, within each student's class, they would get marks based on their learner qualities for that class. So their social studies class may have different learner qualities than their math class. And then we would use that 1, 2, 3. And then for the grading, the academic portion, we decided to not use numbers for that, so that there wouldn't be a whole lot of confusion looking at their qualities and grading both looking at numbers. So with the letters, advanced proficient would be that above and beyond. P proficient, that's your target. P, partially proficient, and then NP, not proficient. And that's also marked on... And that's also marked on the pamphlets. So, the idea is that a, a not proficient mark means that you are emerging in your knowledge. It's not that you, you can't do anything. It's maybe you're riding a tricycle, you're sitting low to the ground, you've got the idea, you want to keep working. And then, partially proficient, you're up to your training wheels. You're a little bit more independent, but you still need a little bit of reassurance and confidence building. Proficient, that's your target, that's where you want to be. You want to be able to be on that two-wheeler and go play around the neighborhood with your friends, all on your own. And then, advanced proficient would be above and beyond, going deeper, maybe adding in some tricks on that unicycle. So, that gives you that, that scale there. Continuing to remember that proficient is, is the target. That would be a grade level performance. So, moving on from those committees, we kind of took a moment to pause and reflect on our own understanding of standards-based grading and our own feelings on that. Really trying to think about what, what do we know, what do we feel comfortable with, what do we still need to learn as educators with standards-based grading? And then, how can we support each other in continuing to grow? And Mr. Bartels was pretty helpful in gathering resources and making sure that we continue on the right track with that. And then, what we did, I came up with this plan, I am not sure that everybody was so happy, but we took every single standard, cut them, I know Mrs. Rickett was helping me, cut them into little strips, every single standard for every grade level, every content. And we spread them out across these big old tables, and we said, okay, what do we need to cover in the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter? So, we could actually see and visualize, this is all that we're responsible for educating our students on. And then, kind of breaking that down into the different quarters, and then within those quarters, how does it make sense that we're going to be presenting this information, this knowledge to our students? And then, it was also a really nice way for us to look at that and say, holy, can we only look at all that we do every single year? This is a lot of stuff. So, we had each quarter, and then also, we, we had a separate sheet of paper that was ongoing in continuous standards that are just kind of built in there every day, things that are, we're always touching on. So, then, we took those maps, and we took them standard by standard and started to, what we call, unpack them. And this is where you get your learning goals. So, we take those very wordy Michigan standards, took them one at a time, and said, okay, if our students need to be adding and subtracting fractions, then they need to know how to compare fractions, they need to use a number line to do it, they need to be able to show me with this and that, and all those little things that they need to be able to do for this big kind of umbrella standard. So, we're looking at all those learning goals for our students. And then, we take those learning goals and put them in a student-friendly language, so that they understand exactly what's expected of them, so that we have our goals in our teacher language, they have it then in student language. And that's where the four-point rubric comes in. We're also looking at that, okay, so if they are adding and subtracting fractions, then this is what it looks like at a proficient level, this is what it looks like, and we have, we're very descriptive in saying, this is what a student can do at a proficient, this is what a student can do advanced, this is what it looks if they're still just emerging. Again, all four of those levels. And then, also, within that, recording any formative and summative assessment methods that we already have in place that will meet those standards and help us measure their learning progress. So, this is an example of what I would maybe call a class syllabus, for, this is 5th grade social studies. So, the big idea is American Indian life in the Americas. That is an entire large standard down into six words. Then, Mrs. Churchill and I pulled out these six learning goals from that one standard. And then, each of those learning goals then has a success criteria listed under that that is in that ICANN student-friendly language, so that, again, they know their expectations and what's expected in order to have learned that specific standard. So, again, that American Indian life in the Americas is the big standard, six learning goals under that, and then you might also have multiple success criteria under each of those six learning goals. So, there's a lot to really unpack and look at there. So, again, this would be an example of like a class syllabus. And then, this is something that still, it's all going to be tweaked as we go along and we learn. But this is what I, I, we would like to have the kids have in their hands. So, for each learning goal, they have, okay, this is what I need to be able to do, and then they have a site where they can evaluate themselves, kind of reflect, maybe say, okay, I'm proficient at this, and then in the space, maybe list some reasons why they know they're proficient. And then, this becomes a communication tool for parents, or, I'm sorry, for teachers and students first, and then also including the parents in that. One of the things I really like about standards-based grading is that it does force some really intense and informative communication through all three of those parties, students, parents, and teachers. Everyone should just be much more aware of where the student stands in their, their learning, so. Putting a little bit more on the students, but also, again, that, that relationship of those three parties is, is key.
This is just an example of what it might, I mean, this is, these are the 6th grade power standards, the five areas that 5th grade students need to know. But underneath each one of those, there, there might be, you know, 5, 6, 7, 8 standards. So, what will happen on the report card is operations and algebraic thinking, they'll have, you know, advanced proficient or proficient, or numbers and operations, proficient, number and operations, fractions, partially proficient. So, instead of just in 6th grade math getting a B, you're going to know exactly how you're doing on those five power standards. Because if you have a B, you're, you're missing something. Even if you have an A, you might be missing something, maybe missing a few standards. We had a parent meeting a couple weeks ago, and, you know, the, a parent grade question was talking about, you know, an all-A student. And there's no doubt in my mind that the all-A student is going to be successful at this, but they might drive their parents a little crazy, because they're not going to be looking at the A now, now they're going to be looking inside of that A. I have five, I have five standards, and I, I'm advanced, but these four I'm advanced, but this one I'm only partially proficient in. So, we're even taking the advanced kids to focus in on where they're not proficient to get it done. And knowing their types of personality, the drive that they have, they're going to, they're going to get those standards that they're maybe not as strong in. So, each one of these, this is what we showed up on the report card for those five, for 6th grade. Now, for 5th grade, 6th, 7th, and 8th, in Power School, not in the report card, obviously, but Power School, you click on each one of these, like if you have a partial proficient for measurement data, it takes you exactly to the assignments, to the standard of what they're missing. So, that's, that's, that's a lot of excellent information. And then, I have to, you know, I have to tip my hat to the staff, because number one, it's not easy. There was some apprehension, but once they got working on it, wrapping their head around it, because it is different. And this is, this is, this is planning with the end in mind, this is what we want at the end, so now how do we do it? Like Mrs. Lusti said, you know, one standard might have nine learning goals. And for those nine learning goals, for the, for the main standard, you have your advanced proficient, you know, all of these nine equal this overall standard. But for each of those nine, they're creating little rubrics. This is proficient standard 1, this is proficient standard 2, standard 3. And I, and I think, you know, they're great teachers, but I think it's even going to make them better. And, you know, the, the three that we have retiring today, I mean, the last month, they've been scrambling, making sure that at least the first quarter is set up for the people that are going to take over. So that, because what we did is create a template, standard, unpack the standard, what's the rubric, proficiency for that, what's the ICANN statement, then what's the rubric for that? How are you, what's the ITW strategy, are you going to use, how are you going to assess it, what's the rubric going to look like? The next learning goal, same thing. So, it, it's pretty intense, but I, if I was a better man, because I'm not, I would say 90% of teachers are done with first quarter, with laying it out. And then, we have, this presentation is not, I'm going to say that because we wanted to give it first. But we will have this PowerPoint on, that pamphlet is on the website, just commonly ask questions. There's research, links to Rick Wormley, Ken O'Connor, and so on and so forth.
And the last thing in your packet, you'll see, to go to standards-based grading, there would be, grading, excuse me, there would be some change in our student handbook. So, I just took the portion of the handbook that would need to be changed, so you could see in there, the stuff that is, as a strike-through would be removed, the stuff that would be bold and underlying is the new language. It summarizes what Mr. Bartels and Mrs. Lusti spoke about regarding how we reported in terms of the advanced proficient all the way down to the not proficient, and keeping the high school grading scale as-is. We didn't change that. If you recall, we, we did some revisions on the retakes last, last break we did them. That 50% still is in there in terms of the ability for 912 students. Again, our, the point of this whole thing is we want kids to mastery. We're not settling for the C or the D, and that's not mastery. So, how do we get there, and what's that evolution to get there?
I have a question. How would this transition work for the high school classes that are often looking at this?
They're going to, they're going to still run on the 820 high school policy, so that we're consistent. They're going to, they're going to lesson plan to the standards, but they're going to report off traditionally.
Okay. So, that kid, so that kid has been basic design in Algebra II, they would have like an A and a B, and then the rest would be their number, okay?
And part of that is because of the transcript and earning high school credit in the middle school.
Very good. Thank you. A lot of work. Thank you very much. This pamphlet's excellent. Thank you. And then, we'll be seeing that at our next meeting to approve. Next is the 2018-19 Student-Athlete Code of Conduct Handbook and Athletic Coaches Handbook.
We only have really two quick changes. One that I have in front of me is the Student-Athlete Code of Conduct. Maybe reference page 10. We just have one quick addition. Due to the growing trend, we've added the cigarettes and the baby to that section. So, that was the only addition that we had for that.
Everything else is the same?
Everything else stays as-is, yes.
Other than the year, which only changed everything.
And then, the Athletic Coaches Handbook on page 9, coaches are required to take a rules meeting through the MHSAA. We just wrote that it's their responsibility, it's responsibility of the head coach to know all of the rules regarding their specific sport, and to contact the appropriate dean of students if they have any questions about those MHSAA rules.
Because we didn't have them do that before, or we're just, we're just making sure that things don't happen?
We're making sure that things don't happen.
Language that was added was the, you need to be aware of the roles for your specific sport. And I guess, when in doubt, call, what we don't want is to affect, take the high school level, a potential student athlete, being, not having a season.
Correct. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Next, 2019 budget presentation.
Okay. There are three slides in your handout. The first one is the enrollment. That has not changed since we started this four, five sessions ago, it would have been number four, four sessions ago. We're still moving students up. We predict that we'll be about 90 kindergartners, and it would be a net when you do the blended count for the fall and the February count to be roughly 36 FTEs down. The second slide, which I shared last time, was the conservative approach in terms of taking the $230 per pupil with that blended count, that actually nets us $30,000 more in revenue than our current revenue estimates. Again, that's not new, that's what we did last time. In the conference committee, that is at the state level, the 230 is now 240 for, that's what the intended budget is to be for Richmond Community Schools and Low. So, that nets us about 40, we're at $30,000 increase in revenue, it now begins us about $44,000 increase in, in our revenue. So, when you look at that sheet at the bottom, based on, you know, the retirement that we acknowledged tonight, it is my recommendation in the budget, there's a couple things. One, we are finalizing the schedule with staffing. We will not be able to run the current elementary specials model with the four specials, with classes getting an additional art first quarter, PE second quarter, and so forth. So, I would be recommending that we add a STEM section at the elementary class, which would be filled with the science and math and engineering at the elementary level, and ultimately through the school. That would be a higher of a point, a part-time teacher. I would also recommend that we have been building this budget on three kindergarten teachers, knowing the number of kindergarters we currently have registered for, the number of kindergarters that are just waiting, they're not fully registered, but we've got partial registrations on them, and the number of families that have chosen to have their child read in kindergarten. I would recommend that we just have four kindergarten sections for next year.
So, that would be what you, for the next meeting?
Correct. Representing that. You'll see the four retirement teachers there. I would recommend in the budget that we replace those four. There's, looking at the schedule, there's no way through attrition to reduce staff. Again, when we had the conversation, we were budgeting for three kindergartens with the idea that probably in August, we're going to add that fourth one. Our numbers are there. You know, we're pretty solid that they're going to be, and not that it's going to grow. So, when you look at the net of all of those positions, hiring a new person, I made some assumptions, hiring not necessarily a, a person at the bottom, because, you know, the market is tough for some specific areas. Given a math-science person is very difficult to find, a quality one, I should say. Not that every teacher is that difficult, but I made some assumptions that there were a different level of step, made some assumptions that, you know, we may get a teacher that has a bachelor's plus 30, or may have hired a teacher with a master's already, that we may have to adjust based on the contract language. Even with the retirements and the replacing them, we still would net about $106,000 less in expenses when all the debt settles. So, when you take that $106,000 and the projected of roughly 95 would be our structural problem, my anticipation is to bring you to, bring you a budget that's pretty close to expenses equal revenue and eliminating the structure. I don't know necessarily if I will be there, because I, we just have the healthcare rates that, usually they go up about 3%, so we've got to take that into consideration. I don't know what the, if there's any increases in water and heating and cooling. This past winter, we had somewhat of a unique winter in terms of the cold. Our heating bills are a little higher than they were the previous year. There was oftentimes a random rate of night to keep the, everything operational, and so our expenses were increased. And you'll get that on the next budget. But I, my target is that we're going to be pretty close to our expenses equalling our revenue. So, that would be my recommendation as we forward the budget, I would plan on bringing you, as for the four kindergarters and a replacement for each one of the retirees that retired tonight. We are looking at reallocating some of our $31A. We have an intervention class we're looking at adding for the middle school, primarily to help with that language arts of math, which our kids or students are assessed on. So, with that, if the, I have, I have to provide that fifth special at the elementary school, because I have a contractual obligation to provide X number of minutes to prep for the classroom, and that's how we provide those minutes. So with that, if the, I have, I have to provide that fifth special at the elementary school because I have a contractual obligation to provide X number of minutes to prep for the classroom, and that's how we provide those minutes. I would be building into that a dollar amount for startup costs for that STEM class, because there's gonna be some materials that are gonna need to be started right after that.
Then along the line of that. Is there, since you're looking at this STEM hire, are we looking into a line item or something to do with the whole robotics, what we have from elementary?
Yeah, in our, in the, in the current budget, you'll see for each level, you'll see two dollar amounts. One is what we get from the state, and one is our minimum match that we have to do. And so that is now a line item in the budget for the first Lego League Junior, first Lego League, first Tech Challenge, and the first Robotics. It's a same, similar to what we evolved, what we did to classroom and departmental budgets this year. That was a learning curve this year in terms of how that was gonna be utilized. There were some courses that we found out were a little more expensive, so they might have gone over budget, or some that went under budget. So we'll be adjusting those numbers. The same thing with the accompanists that we built into the budget for the music and choir when they have to pay accompanists for the practice concerts.
Ryan, by adding this STEM course, explain to me what that schedule's gonna look like? So, so music will happen?
All, all of the elementary specials will start roughly around ten thirty is their prep lunch, and then they're, they're more of an afternoon special. For some specials, they'll start their day at the middle school. So for instance, I believe on the, the teachers. So they'll teach part of their day at the middle school, and then come to the elementary school. What we're trying to do at the elementary school, and we did it last year, we had to adjust it this year, was to create that solid ninety-minute block, if not more, of uninterrupted literacy time. Particularly with the third grade reading, which is our current, first graders are gonna be affected when they hit eighth grade, if they aren't proficient on the EMSTAP. We wanna make sure we have that, that Mr. Coach should talk about, that solid block.
So, so adding in this, this other, will allow for that to happen? We, we can't do that now, is that your question?
Right now, the, the, between the four specials, art, music, PE, and technology. They get that once a week all year. And then first grade may get PE twice a week during card marking one. Second grade may get, or first grade, second card marking might get music twice a week, and go back down to one, to fill in the five specials that they need to get. Because if you recall, we couldn't find a Spanish teacher. I mean, we, we posted, I don't even think we got any applicants on that one. So we had to come up with a better plan, and that allows.
So this, so this means everybody will get it once a week?
Correct.
Got it, all your law?
And just a reminder to the board, if you remember, we talked in the budget, the energy bond that's going away is help offsetting any step increases that current contract settlements require. We have still two contracts that are open. Our food service and transportation, their contracts expire this year, and we're in negotiations with them. The safe, the increased cost in custodial, you'll see a reduction in cost for some of the supplies and contracted services to help pay for that increased custodial cost with the presentation that was tonight.
First reading of all these board policies.
Okay, the first one, policy one zero four three point one, which is public expression. If you see in there, it talks about board members, personal and private uses of social media may have an unintended consequence. Basically, it's for the board to be cautious on posting things that are school board related on personal accounts because it could have a violation of the Open Meetings Act. It's more just a, that you're aware of it, and that it should be done in a very sensitive manner. Policy, the next three policies are exactly the same, criminal history records check, policy one four two one is for professional staff, excuse me, administration. Policy two three, excuse me, three one two one is for professional staff. And policy four one two one is for support staff. And these are requirements that have come out of the changes that the state police have issued. They're, they're not anything really that we have any say to. There's a CRIS system. Basically, we're adding the policy, all CRIS received from the state police and produced by the state police, and received by the district from another proper source will be maintained pursuant to our policy. There is a security, very tight security that we have in maintaining fingerprint information that's been for employees. Renewal that at any time of applicants, fingerprints expenses are the cost of the person, applicant out the district. That, that's not changed, but it does give you that option. My recommendation is to remain what we've currently been doing, have been, have been doing. When you go down, or you go to the next policy, which is number five on the list, forty one sixty-two. This is coming straight out of the federal transport, Department of Transportation. And basically, if an employee is, is in a, driving a car in an accident, what we do, it now covers employees. It defines who's covered in it, whether it's a commercial driver's license substitute, it defines what we do. What's determined an illegal drug, again, all of this language came right out of the federal train changes in the Department of Transportation. When you get to the fourth page of the policy, we do have some options. The ones that I checked are the ones that we currently do. You have the option of the board to, if someone was in an accident, sending them for drug testing, you have the option to do if there's a result of human death, or a citation, so forth. Our policy in practice, if there's any accident that a driver or buses in, we send them for drug testing, I'm recommending that to be consistent. Again, you'll see if for some reason, there's a presence of alcohol, what we do in terms of the policy. If there's been an alteration of the specimen, what we do, and so forth. This is not a problem in Richmond, but we do have to have a policy that's in place. If you recall, last school year, sadly, though nobody was injured other than, there was a driver, but one of the New Haven buses got into an accident on. North Avenue, I think it was a twenty-nine mile or twenty-eight mile road. Having shared a transportation director, our policies are the same, but this is the process that we follow. That's pretty much it, it defines what we have to do, and who, who the point person people are in the district, that we'd have to notify, particularly our transportation drivers. Fifty one eleven, eligibility of resident students. This is federal law that we, we must accept students regardless of their immigration status. And it, you know, we're, we're to educate the student, the legal aspect, that's for the courts and police to determine. But we are in charge of educating them, that's what that paragraph one, and provide them access, which is why we receive federal funding for Title II, et cetera. The other are options to include in the policy, a lot of them are the same. There are some that we do not have, that are consistent that we haven't had. For instance, how we accept foreign students, students that do not reside in the district. Students that have begun their twelfth grade but then moved to another district to allow them to finish it. Again, these are current policies we have. Fifty one eleven point zero one deals with homeless. Most of the policy is the same, excuse me, this is a complete replacement policy, I apologize. A lot of it is the same, but with the new ESSA, which is the federal law, that changed, and how it used to be the elementary and secondary act. It's now ESSA that was approved. This is what they require for homeless now. Notices, how we, if someone disputes it, if we have a homeless student, who's responsible for transportation, et cetera. With that, with ESSA, there is policy fifty one eleven point zero three, which regarding, it's a new policy for us, but it's regarding children and youth in foster care, and what we have to do. In the options on page three, you know, we're, our district is proud of itself, I believe, I'm about keeping a constant educational environment for students. My recommendation to you is that if we have a student that exits foster care, that they be allowed to remain in the school district until the end of the school year. Rather than disrupt the educational and force them to go into another school. It's consistent practice with other areas that we've done, seniors who leave, wanna come back and finish their twelfth grade year.
Ryan, do they have a number of homeless students?
We do, I wanna say it's about twenty, twenty five, that, you know, off the top of your head? I can get that to you, Nancy Larrington is our homeless liaison, I can get that for you. I know over the la, the year, the last couple of years, it has been growing, and we've dealt with more situations. One of the things, just I don't know if the board's aware, but part of our Title One allocation has to be devoted towards homeless. We are responsible for transporting the students when they are homeless. Even if they live outside of the district, if they were ours and they became homeless. So Nancy does a phenomenal job at that. Seventy five thirty, this is a revised policy regarding the lending of board-owned equipment. You have the option as a district to whether you allow. When we talk about lending, we're talking to outside agencies, we're talking about lending staff, equipment to staff to use for educational purposes. And it could be something as simple as, I'm going to the Rotary to make a presentation about Richmond, I need to take a projector with me. If, if I'm, if the first option is you do not allow that, then I, I'm not allowed to take any equipment off campus. So the second option gives you that discretion. I, I, my recommendation is that you leave that discretion with me, and otherwise, the request would have to come to the board, the board to take action, and it may. If you're comfortable with that, I have no problem with that. This is not an issue for the district, but we do have to have a policy that covers ourselves. The, it does talk about if we do lend the equipment out, it's to be used for the purpose it was lended, you can't give it out to family or friends to use and, and so forth. If there's equipment that contains personal information about students, it's gotta be protected, such as a laptop, it's gotta be able to be locked down, be able to be erased, et cetera, if it's lost.
I said, say board-owned equipment, and so the district, are there changes?
The, throughout the policy of NEOLA is the, it's moving towards board-owned, board. You are the representative body of the community, and you basically are in charge of the assets of the community.
That's interesting.
So that's, it's a new.
The district doesn't manage the board?
Technically, the board manages it.
The district owns it. Board doesn't own it. District owns it. We don't own anything.
All the most personnel.
Right.
And ownership of things, if we don't.
We, we can leave it, there's nothing that says we have to, there's no law or anything.
I just don't think, the board, we don't own anything.
I think it can just be confusing for people.
Can we?
District's only for the board managed, or district owned?
I don't mind board managed, but not board owned.
The tenor of board, the four that are here, board manage? Do I make that change then?
Board managed, just fine.
Okay. Policy seventy five thirty oh two, it's a revised policy. If you recall, there's been a series of technology policies, the, with changes in the law for primarily for student safety, the internet, and so forth. This deals with the staff use of personal devices in the workplace. And they elaborate some of them, like iPad-like rather than just iPad, because it's, as technology evolves, Kindle-like devices. You still have telephone and paging devices in there. But if you looked at, throughout the policy, it's talking about, it's not necessarily prohibiting employees, but allows employees that they need to, their primary job is to educate students. And the use of personal devices is for, needs to be an educational purpose. And then it speaks to if that device has student personal information, this is where I could see a coach's phone. He's got the list of all of his players or her player's numbers in there, and so that's personal information, that needs to be, make sure that device has a code that if lost, that has the ability that you just can't open it up, the iPhone. My cell phone, I can access Power School, but it's not readily available, you gotta log in with a passcode and so forth, to make sure that that student information is protected. It reiterates what the board prohibits that can be maintained on a personal device. Social security numbers, the only time we collect that is for payroll employees. Driver's license, credit debit card information, or financial information. Students' personal identifiable information. Now that, that, we can have the directory information, which is public. But if you can't have the information that directly ties student achievement, student, specific information about a student on a personal device, other than the directory information. It's to be kept confidential according to the American Disabilities Act, and personal health information, obviously, just under the HIPAA Act, can't be out there. It's required that there be some type of lock or password protection on the device when they're not used, so that not anybody can just open it up and use it. It speaks to the policy, we still do not allow facilities with cameras in locker rooms, gym, shower facilities, bathrooms, restaurants, restaurant, restroom, et cetera. Forty, seventy five forty point oh two talks about web access. This is talking about student-created apps that we do authorize as part of an educational platform that the board authorized staff and students to create these apps and utilize them. The definitions in the bylaws, as well as there's some other policies that we have, that govern these apps. Educational purposes, information to be able to inform and communicate are the primary purposes. And then under, under no circumstance does our district create an app, I get you a list of items here. Again, it goes back to requiring, let me look at that, page three. A personal webpage cannot be password, you can't require students to go to a staff member's personal website. It's gotta be an educational website. That's why a lot of them would be offering, use our Remind one oh one, or one of the other educational websites that we use with staff, to make sure that there's a tracking ability. And again, it's password protected. Highlighting the. Website coordinator to make sure we're in compliance, is myself, as well as the technology director, and we have identified any of a person in the policy. Then it goes on to, if the teacher creates it, it was, it's the onus on the person creating it that they are aware of, the policy. Obviously, this will be shared with them once the final production is made, and well, as, you know, there's no violation of FERPA. Page nine. We give email accesses and login that they're required to use that. We are not, they are not to use personal emails, or students, if they're interacting with students, they're to use the district-issued email. Seventy five forty-two, access to district technology and information from personal communication. This reiterates the safety concerns on these personal communication devices. Again, such as cell phones, smartphones, iPhones, et cetera, that they have to connect to the network. Employees are permitted, students, board members, guests, as well as conduct to use our network as long as they agree to the terms and conditions. What, and that's really it for that policy. Seventy five forty-three, utilization of district website and remote access. This is what will be, the following resources are available on the website. Links to the website, district department, calendar, our grade book program, link, state reporting required, et cetera. And we have, will have our anti-discrimination policy. And we have, we'll have our anti-discrimination policy, which is required by law. We have to report a summary of bullying incidents. We have to update that twice a year. And any required forms of violence opportunities. I've also added, we have, we have currently school of choice enrollment information on our website. Keep going through the policy. Who has access to, are permitted to use their personally-owned or district-owned computers? Because it's a district-owned or the board-owned, so that can get changed here. It allows them to use their personal devices to access our network so long as they're, it's for educational purposes. That gives the highlight on that. Eighty-three hundred is organizational operational plan. Basically, if something were to happen, an emergency, we have to have a plan to back up our stuff and operationalize the backup. We currently do, the backup for the high school is the middle school. If something were to happen to the whole campus, we're, we would be in trouble. Eighty-three oh five, this is a new policy with informational security. Which just basically in essence says we're going to, we have to set guidelines for collection of and retention of records and our data. And then we have a periodic review of that. This is required as part of a federal statute that boards have policies. Eighty-three twenty-one, criminal justice information. This talks about the security designation. That basically, I'm considered the district's security officer. And if you keep going through it, if there's something that happens, if I now target or have done something in violation of law, who is the backup for that? That would be the next person, which would be the administrative assistant, which would have access to that file. Currently, Terry is that person right now. I don't plan on doing anything illegal or bad, so. Talks about if there's inactive stuff, what we have to do and how we dispose of the stuff. It's more procedural stuff, password. This is what Eric deals with when we set up, when we force staff members to constantly re-change their password. It's part of our security compliance. Eighty-three forty, talks about letters of references. On behalf of the district, the administrators and the superintendent can give letters of references. The letters must be factual, truthful comments. They cannot be. Opinions, and that they should be, and we currently do some type of redo before they're sent out. Oftentimes, a staff member may ask for a letter of recommendation from a, for a teacher if they're applying in another district or so forth, or going to a different career. It also puts in their policy that we are prohibited from assisting a district employee or contractor in obtaining a new job if the person being requested to the district has, knows, or has reasonable cause to believe that the district employee, contractor, agent was involved with sexual misconduct regarding a minor or a student. So we are prohibited from writing letters of recommendation if we know or have reason to believe that something happened. And finally, the last one is eighty-five ten, the wellness. Our food service director, John Estrada, was, my very first thing he got involved with was an audit in our food service department. And one of the things that we, and I see, you'll see in the back of it, the correction action plan, is we have to update our wellness policy. So I started the process and what I've recommended here are some slight changes. Going forward, the wellness committee, which has to be up and running for next school year, would then bring these recommendations to the board, any future changes. Some of it is reasonableness. I did take out the, the specific 50 minutes of instruction per week because that could change based on how we do with it. But we are, we are looking at case six, providing physical education, and opportunity in seven to twelve. And that's it. That's the policy.
Any questions? Next, the portion of our meeting for public comment. It's the time, if anyone would like to address the board, they may do so. You have three minutes to speak. While it is not a question and answer period, if you have a question you need answered, there should be a paper up there with your name and phone number. So I guess, is there anyone who would like to address the board?
I would. I promise I'm going to keep it as short as I possibly can because this has been a long one. But I just, with it being, I'm Sandy Fortman, Haley's mom. And this being her last meeting or whatever, there's just a couple of things I wanted to make sure that I said if I hadn't already said them to people. I know, like, if I had to choose all over again to move to Richmond, I would. These schools have been absolutely amazing for her and my family. And, I mean, it says a lot about the teachers, the administrators, the board. She went here from kindergarten till she graduated. And there's been a lot of people that influenced her in very positive ways. Starting with her second-grade teacher who dealt with her when she had a very emotional year. I don't even know why, but she did. To, I mean, Mrs. Bartels, who had to write a letter of recommendation for her to get in newspaper as a freshman, because that's just something that didn't happen. And Mr. Murphy for taking that recommendation and allowing her to be in that class and just really challenge her. It's just so many, so many teachers. You know, I mean, Mr. Rameer, too challenging, the way that she writes. I think that's the first time she brought home a beat and she was devastated. And I'm like, that's still good. I don't understand. And, you know, Dr. Lad, who unfortunately probably taught her how to argue better and she didn't need any help in that, for sure. And Mrs. Michonne for treating her with respect, like a person, listening to her ideas, even if you didn't agree with them. And just very respectfully explaining things to her. And just, you know, I mean, and the board, they've been very supportive. And the teachers as well, inspires her going to Chicago to study in the summer and going to Miley Lee and a bunch of different opportunities that I didn't even know existed, you know, before that. And I just, a lot of support here in this community. And I would 100% recommend it to anybody. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Board of Education, student rap report.
Okay, well, as always, I'll begin with the elementary school. As the school year wraps up, we don't have that much to talk about for any building, really, to be honest with you. But the elementary school did partake in their end of the school year awards, which are very successful. Something that was really interesting to me about the elementary school is they do a fourth grade clapout. So that's kind of like their graduation walk, where everybody in the school just claps for them as they walk out of the school and they're moving on to middle school. The elementary school also had a PTO sponsored ice cream social to wrap up the year, and that was on June 6th. And then also, Field Day was really successful for them. They had a lot of parent help and it was a lot of fun for the kids. And that was very epic, May. Middle school, Memorial Day, they had their 5K free to run, which are what these water bottles are from. And that was very successful for them. That was their first time doing that. And, you know, they couldn't have done it without the local business help. So they would like to thank them as well. And on behalf of the students, I would like to thank all the local businesses for helping. Middle school also had very successful end-of-year award ceremonies. And on Monday, June 4th, our fifth graders got to take their trip to the park and have a nice fun day at the park to celebrate their end of the year. And finally, with the middle school, the sixth graders got to go to Camp Hope Nikonic for a day and enjoy all those fun outdoor activities, such as zip lining. That was my favorite when I went. Then that was on June 5th. And then for the high school, I would like to congratulate our softball team on winning regionals. And like Mr. Reinhardt said, they are competing in Novae, at Novae High School for quarterfinals tomorrow at 4:00. So if you can make it, come out and support them because they work hard and they're doing very well this season, as they always do. And this was their third regional with. So congratulations to them. And on that same track, I would like to congratulate Carly Barjak, or Barjakovich, as she would say, is in the top four for Player of the Year for total softball. So congratulations to her. I think they are going to release the finalists later this week, if I'm wrong in that. And then finally, Richmond High School was among 391 schools that received Gold Level Certification for DECA. So I'd like to congratulate our DECA team. I know that Allison Amen, Jackie Wilson, and Emily Samarick were those three students that really worked hard to have that Gold Level Certification. Those were the three students that qualified to compete nationally. So I'd like to congratulate them. I would also, I'm very proud to announce that we have a student representative on Twitter. That is what I've been working on for three years. So we finally have one. And of course, now that we finally have one, I can't really remember what the Twitter handle is. I think that it's RHS Rep, but I'll have to email it out. So we have that up and running, and that is how we'll do our student question. And hopefully, one of the biggest things for me, my mission that I took on was to get students to understand what goes on here because it's a lot, and a lot of times it's lost in translation. So I was hoping that Twitter would be a good outlet to do so. And I'm excited to pass that on to Lexi to continue that project. And then before I conclude my report, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity because it's given me a chance to grow and learn a lot, learn a lot that I didn't know before. And I think that student voice is really, really important. And it's really great that our school board can recognize that because not every school does that. So I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity and continuing it. And I'm very confident that Lexi will do a really good job keeping that student voice alive. So I wanted to thank you. I also wanted to thank all the principals for dealing with my emails twice a month. Always bugging them. But I guess that concludes my report. If you want to move on to the student question.
Okay, the question is, is there any change related to cellphone policies seen in the near future? We will be looking at it. Part of it is our ability, as you see over there, the wire hanging there. We are, one of the upgrades is our Wi-Fi connection. I think I might have mentioned this before, but our current ones only allow like 30 devices to go to it. The new ones allow, I think it's like 500 devices to go to it. So part of our challenge with our Wi-Fi has been allowing students to have their laptops, their cell phone, whatever other devices and all pulling from the Wi-Fi. And I think that's the conversation we're going to look at when we start looking at the technology evolution and the one-to-one technology. So we will be looking at that because as cell phones evolve, they do a lot more. They are basically a computer. And so we need to think through the implications of evolving that policy. It will be on the docket for discussion, but I don't know if any changes in the near future are coming.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent Legislative Update.
As Haley mentioned, we've had the, pretty much the last two weeks have been two weeks of celebrations. From May 23rd, we had the class of 2018 graduation, which was unbelievable in terms of, it's very impressive where our kids are going. It's all thanks to a great family and great staff. You had administrators and the support staff who are there, helping them every day. To the next day, going to the class of 2032's promotion ceremony, and then that, every class. And so I'm pretty proud that as, in the district, we were able to recognize all students at every grade level for what they have accomplished. And so I know it's a lot of work on staff putting that together, all the behind-the-scenes stuff for that hour, 45 minutes. So I just want to read, say a special thank you, not only to the administrators here, but their secretaries and their staff, because it is a lot of work behind the scenes that you see. It's like a wedding. A lot of planning, a lot of stuff goes up to it for that short hour ceremony and then it's done. I don't know if that's a good example, but maybe not. Today, started our summer food service program. We expected the lead to be lighter. We had a, believe we had about 35 at the Bebe Street Park. Just a reminder, any student 18 and under, regardless of whether you live in Richmond or not, if you show up to Lee Elementary School between 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, or between 10:30 and 12:00, you will receive a free breakfast, free lunch. If you show up to Bebe Street Park between 8:30 and 9:30 in the morning, and if 11:00 to 12:00, there's a poster out, on the signs out there, you will receive a free breakfast and lunch. And so I was talking to some of the coaches today, Mr. Coker for football. And I said to have the kids come in before the weight room lifting, get a breakfast. And when they're done, have them go back and have a free lunch. So please take advantage of it. It's a great program. This is the first time Richmond qualified for that program. Tonight, we honored people who are retiring from the district. And we've, we've done a lot of honoring or at least recognizing those that are leaving the district. And I know it's not her, her last board meeting, but I just want to thank publicly Terry, because I probably may not have this big of a turnout at the next board meeting. Terry was the first person I spoke to in this district when I interviewed back in May, March, April, May of 2014. I actually still have some of the original emails that we corresponded back and forth together. Terry is a wealth of knowledge. Her professionalism, her dedication to the district is unparalleled. She will be truly missed. Her cat poster, her picture frame of the cat will be missed, which her angry cat, kind of an inside joke. But she brought humor to the organization. She brought reality to my position sometimes and kept me in check, so I appreciated that. She has given 200% to this organization. I can't thank her enough. Again, this isn't her last board meeting, but she will be deeply missed by everybody in this organization. We had a little, small going-away party for her last week with staff. I know a lot of them were gone or finished last Friday, but we will do something special again. Jamie, you've got big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill. And I know Terry will do well wherever she goes. She is a very dedicated employee. And just a good person. On the legislative front, as I reported, the budget went to conference committee. It is now left conference committee. Basically, they take both sides, the House and Senate, they get together and they hash it out. And then this is pretty much the budget that's been approved. So for Richmond Community Schools, they did an increase between $120 and $240 based on the 2X formulas. Those that are the lower end get twice as much as those that are at the higher end, so will get $240. They kept a million dollars in the budget for MDE partnership district. They called it a bunch of different names, but basically low-performing districts, you enter into a partnership to be turned around. They have still in the budget, $25 for every high school pupil. They do recognize that high schools do cost more to run. If you recall in the last budget, we used a portion of that when that was given to us at the last minute to pay for our liaison officer, and there were some additional dollars. So that would be a recommendation to keep that. The transportation did, did get taken out. They had a budget increase of per rider based on the School Finance Research Collaborative Report, that school districts, it costs more. And just using an example, the charter school that's located in New Haven does not provide transportation, gets the same funding as we do. And we have to take part of our funding to provide transportation, so there's not an equal playing field, so. There are some things that we are watching, that I am very, I'm closely watching. Beginning with this year's ninth graders. They used to be able to take one of their foreign language, world language, to the world language credits. Take one of them if they completed a CTE course. That expires with this year's ninth graders. There was a sunset in the law. So beginning with next year's eighth graders coming into ninth graders, they're back to having two years of a world language. And when you look at the schedule. And when you look at the schedule, it puts restrictions on us being able to promote CTE programs. So there is a bill, Senate Bill one seventy-five, that's been introduced, it's in actually committee, I should say, that will allow high school students in the graduating class of twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So that would be eight, current eighth graders, current seventh graders, and current sixth graders to fulfill one of their language requirements by completing a CTE program or a visual and performing area program. This is very good for kids. It gives us options. I think in Miss Michonne with the CTE, this is something that we've been fighting for and so forth. Senate Bill three forty-three is on the docket. It requires boards of education to provide pupils with the most recent analysis of in-demand occupations in the region which the school is located. And this would be provided by the Bureau of Labor, Marketing and Information. How that happens is still unknown, but the idea is they're trying to promote the CTE and skilled trade because there is a shortage of those positions or people going into those fields. That's what we're watching in terms of what with our requirement of the school district. And then Senate Bills six eighty-four and six eighty-five. Currently, every eighth grader has to do an educational development plan, an EDP. This would require, modify that EDP as well as modify school improvement plans, which you heard a part of it say, to include information on careers, learning activities, and other opportunities related to high demand careers. So they're, they're doing some backdoor requirements, but they're trying to get kids to not always think the college route, that there are many opportunities in the skilled trades field and very lucrative in a financial aspect. And that's it. Anticipation is tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest, they will approve the budget because they want to go on a summer break as soon as possible. There's a lot of campaigning going on, so that's it.
Thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything? Well, I just want to personally and on behalf of the board, say thank you to Haley. You have truly done an amazing job these last three years and it's been a joy to watch you grow into the person that you are right now and I'm very excited to see who you turn out to be and that hope that you let us know what's going on with you so that we can all say we knew you when, when you become very famous at what it is that you do. You have great potential. You are truly a very, very good person. You have made our school district look so good every time you speak here at our meetings and out in the public and it has just been great having you sit at the table with us. So thank you and good luck to you. And to Lexi, I want to let everyone in the audience know, we had three excellent candidates who were interested in the spot and Lexi shown above, she, her enthusiasm for sitting at the table with us and what she wants to bring to the table with us is going to be amazing. We're excited to have her with us too and usually we, I know in the interview you, the question was how long do meetings last? Good Lord, they don't always last this long. So I just want to throw that out to you. We did talk about that a little bit, but we really look forward to having you with us and we know you're going to do great things for us too. So welcome. You're welcome. Okay, next, our action item. Approval of the custodial and the maintenance contract with ABM. We had that presentation, what seems like hours and hours ago. There is a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a service agreement with ABM for three-year custodial, skilled trades, and general maintenance contract beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, for a total not to exceed five hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, five hundred and sixty-one thousand thirty-one dollars for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, and five hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars for the two thousand twenty, forty-one school year. For the funding from the district's general budget is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? We're just, we're chuckling because since there's only four of us, everybody's got us supporting, so that's why we're just kind of chuckling. It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, I'll do a roll call. Tracy.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion hearings. That concludes our meeting. We are adjourned at ten twenty-seven.